Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM, Thursday, March 20th, 2014. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the open meeting law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection E, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Connie Marcelino, and she's recording an audio version, and four of her government TV, Gary Leet, is recording both the video and audio version of the meeting. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination thereof, please notify me now and I shall announce your intention to the attendees. So is there anybody else who wants to record this meeting, or that is recording this meeting? Okay. Board members present this evening are Vice Chair Gene Als, permanent members Rich Matus, John Frank III, and our newly appointed permanent member, James Corkin, together with alternate members Denise Luciola and Paul Canton. Also present to my right is Elizabeth Dennehy, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Connie, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended?
Yes, ma'am.
I declare the March 20th, 2014 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. Before we start with the agenda items, I want to advise the petitioners and other participants as follows. We have a 15-item agenda this evening. Time for presentation and rebuttal will be limited to three minutes per person. Number two, the purpose of our zoning ordinance as stated in Section 86-2 is to promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the city, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city, to prevent overcrowding of the land, to conserve the value of the land in buildings, to lessen congestion in the streets, to avoid undue concentration of population, to provide adequate light and air, to facilitate adequate provisions for transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements, and to preserve and increase the amenities of the city, all as set forth in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended. Number three, Massachusetts General Law 40A, Section 10, first paragraph instructs us that a grant of a variance must be based on circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, and a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. Number four, Section 86, 482, grants the Zoning Board of Appeals power to hear and decide appeals or petitions for variances from the terms of the ordinance with respect to particular land, uses, or structures, and special permits. Special permits will require the board to have a bifurcated hearing. That is, first the board must find that the relief sought shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing use to the neighborhood. If the board finds in the negative, the petition is denied. If the board finds that for the petitioner on that particular first issue, then the next part of the hearing will be addressed, the substantive relief being sought. We are a five-member board. A vote of at least four members shall be required for a petition to be granted. I cannot participate in Agenda Items 3 and 6. Vice Chairman Gene Als will conduct those hearings, and alternate member Denise Luciola will be the fifth member of the board voting on those two items. When we arrive at Agenda Item number three, the next agenda item to be heard will be Agenda Item number six. So we'll do three and six in succession. That way Gene can do those two and then I'll come back and do the other agenda items. That being said, is there any questions before we start? We'll start with Agenda Item number one. David Daniel, 3133 North Main Street, lots T-25, 25, 87, and 88. It's a variance request to divide the property to three lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot and construct a single-family dwelling on each of the remaining lots, waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence District S. Lot size is 24,049 plus or minus square feet, 14,645 plus or minus square feet, and 14,669 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, Sue. Will you identify yourself for the record, please?
David Daniel. I'm here to seek the variance for this property. It was approved several years ago, back in the 90s, I believe, and was never filed in time to keep it activated. So Attorney Mark Levin advised me that it needed to be going through the process again for the variance. So that's why I'm here to seek your approval.
Okay, so the first parcel that we see is Parcel A. That's the existing house and building on it. That's going to stay?
Correct.
127.68 square feet, 187 depth along Ashley Street, 17.3, I guess is the closest the side yard comes to the easterly side of the building?
Yep.
Parcel B and Parcel C have 50-foot frontage. So it's really the front, the waiver of frontage for those two lots that you require.
Right, exactly.
In all other respects, the building envelope, it's not shown here, but you will, one of the conditions may be that you'll meet all other dimensional requirements, front yard set, rear yard.
Do I have a plan? I don't have it with me, but just a plan with where the house would be situated. They had a surveyor lay it out for me, and it does meet all the requirements.
Are the utilities, all utilities will be able to be brought in from North Main Street?
They will be, they're not.
No, but they will be. So there'll be no mutual or combined utilities coming from Parcel A?
No.
Okay. All right. Members of the board, any questions?
Can you tell me about the first lot? There's a couple houses on there now. What are you?
That first lot, that's actually one house with a garage, three-stall garage.
Are you gonna knock that stuff down, or is?
No, no, that stuff's.
That's gonna stay?
Yeah.
There's a house in the garage there now.
Correct. Where you see in the center is where the house is. In the top-left corner is where the garage is. The driveway would be from North Main Street going into the property from North Main Street. So they wouldn't have access from 3133 North Main Street.
Are you gonna have all separate utilities, sewage and water?
Yep.
On every lot?
Well, just to the parcel on the right-hand side will. Nothing's being done with this center parcel.
Because you got three lots there now. When you built the houses, are you gonna have separate utilities there?
Yes.
Yeah.
But let's just be clear. The access to all three lots, except for the existing access on Parcel A. Parcel B and Parcel C will be from North Main Street.
Correct.
No shared driveways?
No.
Okay.
Parcel, no, it's not. Two separate driveways.
Okay.
David?
Yeah?
Tell me how you're gonna get access to those properties, because I know you got a stone wall off of North Main Street.
Right through the stone wall.
You're gonna cut right in from Main Street up?
Yeah, open up the stone wall. And there might be one or two trees that need to come down to make the driveway wide enough.
And all the sewage is gonna come from North Main Street?
Sewer is most likely gonna come up North Main Street. There's an extension that runs into the sidewalk, two houses down.
Yeah.
So they could run it up the sidewalk there with approval from the Sewer Commission.
Okay. Well, we can make that as a condition.
A condition.
You mentioned off-street parking for each of the new lots?
Yes.
Two off-streets is the minimum, is that okay?
Pardon?
Can we make that as a condition of the variance?
Well, that's what the district requires, yeah. So if you wanna make it as a condition, Rich, we can.
Absolutely. Now, I've got approval from the owner on Parcel A for an easement, and the middle Parcel B for an easement to run a sewer line across those properties to tie into the Ashley Street sewer. So I've got two options right now as far as connecting into the sewer. The easement would have to be approved, obviously, from, through the Sewer Department, and whoever else needs to be informed on that. But those are two options on running sewer into the property. Water is right, right there on the sidewalk, right in front of the property. Electricity around the poles, right, right there on the street.
You own this property. Your signing is both the applicant and the owner, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear with that. Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Roland?
I'm interested in Parcel C. I'd be the person building a house on it, and I can tell the board right now that the Sewer Department has, in fact, signed a building permit application to utilize that easement across B and C to tie into the sewer manhole on, at the bottom of Ashley Street. Like, will not, no other houses.
But it'll be a separate, it'll be a separate?
No other, no other connections from any other houses.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a reasonable request, but I'd like to put some conditions on it. Separate utilities, lease, two parking spaces per house, and all houses facing North Main Street, not going inside ways.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
All-dimensional requirements of the S District to be met.
Right. And it costs separate utilities on each one of the lots.
Absolutely.
That's my petition. And one other thing is, as I say, the houses must face North Main Street, not inside ways.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
Okay. Because you got one lot that's only 80 feet wide, the middle lot. There's one old lot that's 80 feet, and that's the one I am concerned about, the two of them that's a good 80 feet, to make sure the lots are facing North Main Street.
Okay.
That's my condition, my motion, my condition.
Motion. For two seconds, if all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Petition's granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item number two. Cheryl J. Robey, East Side of Vale Street, abutting 270 Vale Street, Lot E-119. Variance request to raise the existing garage and construct a single-family dwelling, waiving dimensional requirements in Apartment District A2, Lot Size 5,033.
Yes, short name's what, 255 Montgolbe Avenue, representing Cheryl Robey on this matter. Mr. Chairman, what we have is a lot of, pre-existing lot that is not conform to the zoning, the A2 zoning. Obviously, it's only 5,000 square feet, 50 by 100. Ms. Robey's owned the property, owned with Gordon Souza since 1965. They apparently had intentions back then, from what I understand, as possibly living in the neighborhood, because Ms. Robey has other family in the neighborhood. They now live down in Alexandria, Virginia, so that's not an option for them anymore. But they went to the Building Department. The Building Inspector told them that they would need to seek relief from the zoning board to, in order to construct a single-family dwelling on the house. As you can see from the neighborhood, most of the single-family dwellings that are out there are on 5,000-square-foot lots. There's quite a few 5,000-square-foot lots that contain three, three family dwellings. So we feel it fits into the character of the neighborhood as far as that goes, and we don't feel there'll be any type of detriment to the neighborhood. Obviously, it's a lot of record. It stands alone out there. If the variance isn't granted, the only other option would be possibly if a neighbor wanted to buy it or something. We are seeking relief on the setbacks in the area. 20 for the front, eight for the side, 30 for the rear, in order to fit roughly a thousand square foot house on there. And the way it's positioned, the existing garage on the site will most likely, will be raised in order to construct a new single-family dwelling.
It's in an A2 district. Minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, yes?
Yes, correct.
Members of the board, any questions? Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I think this request seems reasonable. I'd make a motion to grant with a few conditions, that the existing garage gets raised. The house, the new house going up is not to exceed 32 feet by 32 feet, or 1,024 square feet like you have on your plan. And the minimum of two off-street parking spaces be provided for the house.
Rich, before you get a second, could I just ask?
Somebody doesn't like that motion.
And I'd add the separate utilities as well.
Okay. But before we get to a second, I just need to ask a question.
Yes.
It's the yellow house with, the house, Gene, that's the house yesterday?
Yeah.
With the yellow siding?
Yeah.
Is it the garage to the side of it that you're raising, or is it to the, I guess it's to the south?
Yes, the one family at 270, I believe that is the yellow house.
No, that's the yellow house, and then next to it, is it that garage that had the same siding on it that you, that lot that's being demolished?
Yeah, actually, that is. That's a separate lot, yeah.
Not the, not next door with the fences and the dog runs and stuff?
Oh, I believe, well, actually, that might be, now that I'm thinking about it. I haven't been out there in an awful long time, Mr. Chairman, so I know that the garage is a standalone and the lot itself is fenced in, and there is an area in the back.
Well, there's lots, that's what's throwing me in terms of, when we were physically out there yesterday, there was this yellow house, has yellow siding. There's a garage with the same kind of siding. And then to the right of the house, as you're on these, I guess it's the west side of Vale Street. Looking east, there is this fenced-in pen. There's, a guy had some votes and it looked like a dog run in there.
Yeah, I believe that, that's the lot.
So it's this, it's this lot there that?
Yes.
It's not the, it's not the one to the north of the house?
No, no, no.
That has the same?
No.
David?
Yeah?
That's the facing the lot. There's a fence that divides the two lots together.
Correct.
There's a house on the left, and there's an empty lot on the right with the shed is sitting on now.
Right, there's another empty lot.
That's where you're planning to put the house.
We're putting the house where?
Yeah. How close is that house gonna be to the house on the left?
To the house on the left? Roughly, the house on the left is about probably eight to 10 feet off the property. We're asking for the eight-foot setback, so I'm gonna say probably about 18 feet, 16 to 18 feet.
Yeah. So Gene, when you look at the plan, what they've got is a 10, eight-foot side yard on the house, 20-foot front yard setback, and it looked like a 30-foot rear yard.
And that, the lot with the shed on it to the south, E-120, it doesn't reflect on this because the variance, we were granted a variance on that for Delphina Souza to re-divide 20, 23, and 22 into two lots. So really, E-20 is now gonna become part of 298, a portion of it, and the back half of it is gonna become part of 1186 Slade Street. That was a variance that was granted, if I'm not mistaken, back in December.
Now, you get two lots. The house on the left is sitting on 5,000 square feet?
Yes.
And the house that you're looking to build is gonna be sitting on another 5,000?
Another 5,000, yes.
Yeah, it's that vacant lot?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Rich, I just wanted to be clear which lot we were talking about, because the photograph is a different lot than what we were looking at yesterday. All right. So that was your motion. Grant it. Grant the motion, conditions being the existing garage gets raised, 32 by 32 dwelling, no larger than 32 by 32, off-street parking spaces, separate utilities. Was there anything else? That was your motion? Okay. Do I have a second on Rich's motion? John Frank's second. All those in favor? One, two, three?
No.
No? Okay.
I take it so we can adjust it?
Okay. So you've got three in favor, two opposed. This petition is denied.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Gene, you're gonna do Agenda Item number three?
Yeah.
And you're gonna do Agenda Item number six?
Okay.
Item number three, Jacob Lopes, 291 Pleasant Street, Lot T-9-75-77. Remains request to divide properties into two lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot, and create a non-billable lot to combine with 294 Calvin Street, waiving dimensional requirements in a single residential District S, Lot Size 8,874 plus and minus square feet, and 9,719 plus and minus square feet. You representing the petition and wanna state your name and the record for the?
Yes.
Record for the book, please?
Attorney Mark Levin, 1111, 138 Lock Street, Foreman, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening representing Jacob Lopes, also Mr. Piver, Fernando Piver, who actually owns, has title to the premises. This is a very strange one. Mr. Lopes had owned this property for a while. He has potentially two parcels of land. They're actually not with the same registry. One is registered land, and one is unregistered land. And that's why the split you see is based on, in fact, the registered land parcel and the unregistered land parcel. You wanna change those lines because it's a very technical thing with the land. It was discovered and determined that when Mr. Lopes was selling the premises at 291 Mount Pleasant Street, the lot behind it was believed to be a separate lot of record at that time. That gets through separate taxes for it. The city never merged those as a matter of right. But it was looked at and decided that by law that the city has, although the frontage for the house is on Mount Pleasant Street, that the single-family home is there, that because there is one common line on a way, although not a constructed way, it was in fact a way that was recognized by the city, we as a matter of zoning, who they've learned Chairman, who was consulted, that they probably merge as a matter of law. So we're coming before you because what had happened at the time, the lot number two, which is down below the property, and drops down, is on a paperway. It, the owner down below, Mr. Rithington at 294 Calvin, said he would buy and take the property for himself because he didn't want to prevent small lots from being chopped up and having a house. There was a variance granted right to the north of both of these properties that cut up two properties and a new single-family home went there. So Mr. Rithington really wants to protect his own property to make sure that no one else builds. So that's why we've asked that to be separated and not asking it to be used for buildability purposes at all, that it be a non-buildable lot, so that he wants the protection, and the board will know the protection is that way too. Basically, Mr. Piver actually does not want that land, because he says, "I'm paying a tax bill for land I really can't use because it drops off behind his property. His use of his property is all up on Mount Pleasant Street." And we're using the lot line, like I said again, based on the land court line, because there's one deed in land court and there's one deed in the regular registry. So that's what we're doing. We're separating it. It should be a simple thing. This parcel as a whole is the biggest parcel in the entire area, so it's unusual for this area to have this size lot. The size lot, even on the new zoning, would have been 12,000 square foot. When this was created, in the old plans, there were 5,000 square foot lots, and that somehow got to these sizes when they were using them. So we're asking you to allow us to divide the lot based on the land court line and letting Lot 2, the vacant land, be conveyed to the neighbor.
Any questions from the board?
At 294 Calvin.
At 294 Calvin. So this won't have frontage technically on Virginia, because again, it's an unconstructed way, and that what kinda also makes this parcel unique, because not too many properties are on non-constructed ways in that area.
And no further subdivisions?
No further subdivision. Mr. Rithington wants to buy it for his backyard.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody in favor of the petition? Anybody against the petition?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant with two conditions, that the newly-created lot remains non-buildable and no further subdivisions of the property.
We got a motion with the conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
We're gonna move down to number six, Denise and Deborah Amaral, Raymond and Nancy and Knight, 239, 241 Glow Street, and 217 Glow Street Lot, Lot H-4-19-23. Variance request to construct a loading dock, waiving dimensional requirements in this two-family residential district. It's an R4, Lot Size 2162 plus and minus square feet, and 9,778 plus and minus square feet. You representing the petition and wanna state your name and the rec, name and address for the record, please, and tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, Attorney John Zajak, representing the petitioners Denise and Deborah Amaral, and also joining in that petition are their neighbors, the Knights. The Knights were separately represented by Attorney Greg Riehl, who told me that he would be here this evening. I think he believed we were a little bit further down the list than, but.
Greg's always moving along pretty well today.
I see that. But I'm certainly prepared to go forward. And obviously, the Knights do join in this petition and submitted a letter to the board also indicating why they believe this would actually be a benefit.
So you wanna continue, or you wanna wait until he comes? Are you expecting him in?
He said he'd be here at about 6:30.
Oh, okay. That's a film, it is up to you, or what do you wanna do?
I'm fine going forward. Perhaps get here before.
Go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes. We're seeking a variance so that the Amarals can add a loading dock to their existing bakery. Bakery is a grandfathered use that's been an exist, that's been on location for quite some time. I actually have a couple of photographs. I know that the board has probably seen the property, but I did, just to refresh their memory, I do have a couple.
Greg, can you get that though, please? Seems to be a lot of noise in the hallway. Thank you.
Hey Greg, you may as well come down because it's your petition.
All righty?
Yes.
We have to skip around the agenda.
You're up. Thanks. Welcome. Just getting started.
He's doing a pretty good job for a while. He's looking for a discount now.
Okay, I don't know where you left off, but I'm just. For the record, Attorney Gregory Bray, and I represent the Knights in this particular petition. This petition, I don't know what Attorney Zajak has stated thus far. We're two abutting neighbors beginning together in order to convey a parcel of land. As you see on the, it's about 20 by?
108.
108. And it's for the purpose of, the Knights are gonna deed that to the existing bakery. Quite honestly, I've been out to the site, and it's actually gonna be, again, in my opinion, a benefit to the neighborhood, because it's gonna allow for the bakery to utilize that, that particular portion of the property for a loading dock to get trucks off of the street. Right now, it is kind of, it is kind of a hairy situation when some of the deliveries have to come in, because there's larger trucks. This will allow them to get the trucks off of the street and be less of a hindrance to the neighbors. There's a large piece of property over there that my, my client has. He's desirous of deeding that out to the, to the bakery. At one point in time, we were trying to do it by virtue of an easement, but in dealing with the city, and I think I talked to Liz, and I know I talked to the Building Inspector, that wasn't gonna be okay, because he does want to erect a loading dock?
Yes.
And therefore, it would cross over the lot line, wouldn't be able to be done.
Hey Greg, tell me about the addition you have planned to do, because I know it's abutting the property next door, and it's pretty close. What's the?
Well, the addition, as I, and maybe Mr. Zajak is more apt to talk about this, and I'm not sure if the owner of the bakery, Mr. Amaral, is here. It's really not an addition, Mr. Als. It's going to be a loading dock, because there's going to be a portion in the back portion of the bakery, as I understand it, and it's gonna be a, you know, a garage-type door, and it's gonna be used for deliveries. It's for that purpose, in order to get the trucks off the roadway, and it's gonna be, again, we hope to make it for a less hindrance of the neighborhood. My client owns the existing house, and again, I'm not sure which plan you have, Mr., I'm looking at this. My client owns the existing house with the pool. It's my understanding that, Mr. Am-
That's the Knight.
That's the Knight property, yes.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that Mr. Amaral is going to put some type of buffer, whether it be a retaining wall or something along that, in order to help my client out, because his pool is right there.[1798.23] his pool is right there.
Right.
And he's also going to locate his dumpster away from the lot line in order that that's not a hindrance because it can go all the way over. Am I correct and I understand wrong?
It's going to be at least a, maybe an eight-foot fence or a buffer zone with trees?
It can be a six or an eight, whatever you desire.
Is there abutting people here now?
My client, I apologize. There's Mr. Knight. Mr. and Mrs. Knight are up here.
Yes.
That's my clients. And they're part, they're a part of this petition because we're going to join it together.
Okay.
That's going to be a non-billable lot, obviously. It's going to be conveyed to the Amarals.
I, anything else you have to say?
Just briefly added, if you'll notice the way that it's configured, the loading dock is set even further back than the existing dock that's there, so that's going to give even more space for trucks to get in and out. There have been issues in the past where occasionally if a truck is getting in and out and if there's a car parked directly across the street, there've been a few occasions where the folks at the bakery have had to ask people to move their car. This should eliminate that, that trucks should be able to get in and out without any hindrance at all. And we think it'll actually improve the flow of traffic through there. The trucks will be completely off the road and able to act, come in and out of the loading area.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Do the Knights have an idea of what they want as a buffer? Shrubbery?
What would you, Mr. and Mrs. Knight, would you like to have a fence, shrubbery?
Yeah, a fence on top of the wall.
Now's the time to say it because-
Yeah, we'd like to put that as a-
Putting into conditions.
Yeah, a condition that there be a fence, six to eight foot, at least six is fine.
Yeah. On top of this. There's a fence there right now that's going to come down.
Okay.
He's going to put the same type of fence back on top of the wall. I have a fence there right now, the same, so it's a-
You're just going to run it all the way back?
A six-foot fence, chain link, privacy fence?
Wooden fence.
A wooden fence, a stockade fence?
Right, stockade.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Any other stipulations that the dumpster be away from that lot line?
Right.
We're fine with that. And I think Mr. Amaral's in agreement with that. And they've talked about this for quite some time.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody in a favor of the petition? Anybody against the petition? Any other questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think the request seems reasonable while there are a few conditions that a six-foot stockade fence be put up between the two properties, separating the, you know, near the pool area. The dumpsters be moved to somewhere else on the property as opposed to near the pool and that that lot remain non-billable.
All right. Anybody else wants to add any other conditions?
With the exception, Mr. Matus of, of the loading dock, which is going to go on there?
Right, right, the residential.
Correct. I knew what you meant. I wanted to just clarify that.
Now's the time. Anything else you want to add?
Fine.
Tamara?
Those are the two things, right?
That's fine, yep.
All right. We got a motion with the conditions. Do we have a second? We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion granted. Good luck.
Thank you.
Is Dignan Ashad out there?
I'm last on the list, so I thought I had a little time.
Mr. Chairman, also?
Yes. Thank you, Denise. Thank you for coming out. Ready for agenda, item number four. Roberto and Betty Reposo, 124 Hafford Street, Lot L436. This is a variance request to convert a portion of the existing commercial building into a residential unit and to construct an office and restroom for the current business waiving use and dimensional requirements in the general residence district G. Lot size 7,500 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city of 10th Berge Street as well as 449 Fourth Corner Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. Here this evening on behalf of Roberto and Betty Reposo, who are the property owners of this property located at 124 Hafford Street. You may know the property that was previously used, because it's owned as Capital Caterers' building that they had been in operation for, for many, many years. My app, the applicant has purchased the property just this year and is proposing to operate his landscaping business out of this building. It's an existing two-story block building and you'll see that in the photo that Mr. Matus has. So his intent is to operate out of this commercially-used building. The city assessor has it listed as a commercial use. It's been being taxed that way on the tax records. The building department has recognized it as a commercial use. In that building, he would like to put in a small office. You see, sketched out in a little intermittent portion of the building with a bathroom. There is no bathroom for that back business portion of the property. So the first portion of the proposal is to put in a small office space with laboratories. His second component of this application, the very first portion of this building, as you'll see on the aerial photo as well as the photograph that I have just submitted, is a small portion of the building that comes out to Hafford Street. He is proposing to convert this, this portion into a two-story apartment, living room on the first floor and a one-bedroom portion on the second floor of that building. The lot is a conforming lot in the district, in the general district, requiring 50 feet of frontage and 7,500 square feet of area. So the way that the lot currently sits, it could comply and it could hold a two-family structure, which would be somewhat similar to everything in the neighborhood. The applicant also owns the property to the south at 136 Hafford Street and has recently renovated that entire building. So his intent is to come in here, rehab the entire structure, operate his small business out of it and to have that one-bedroom, two-story apartment at the front of this building. As you can see with the surrounding area, pretty much every lot on the surrounding block is smaller than this one. Most contain three, two-family dwellings. So we don't feel that this would be a detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, it would be in keeping with, with how the property has been used over the years since this building was constructed, I believe in around 1950, and that adding this one apartment would be similar to the apartment uses around the site.
Mr. Chairman.
There'd be no outside construction, no expansion of the building, just interior fit-ups. It's there now.
But, but you're saying-
That building that I gave you.
But the representation that you're making is you think that this commercial use can continue now for this new business, the landscaping business, as a matter of right?
I, I don't know how long that landscape, how long the use, the existing commercial use has not been used and the building department could not give me that, that number. So we are asking that as-
So it's part of the relief that you're asking for?
Exactly. Yes, it is. Change of use.
No, no. He's, he's asking for a variance. What I thought I heard him say at the beginning that he didn't need any, didn't need any authorization. He could act, he could use that building commercially-
No.
-at, without getting a variance because it wasn't going, it could have been a change, possibly a change of use, but with the, now you have a combined use of residential and commercial use on the single site. Okay. I just wanted to be clear that I understood what you were saying.
The applicant purchased the property in 2013, so he's only owned it for a year. So we could not confirm the use of, you know, the continuing non-conformity use for that two-year period of time.
All right. Jane, you have a question?
Yeah. This is a picture of the, the project.
Yes.
The Capital Cantina. What's there now?
Right now, the building is not being used.
On the top floor, what's there now?
What's in it?
Almost looks like an apartment.
No, just as far as, I've never been in the building. The owner is here.
It's not rented out now at all?
No, not at all.
Okay, the building next door?
That's attached to it?
This one in the middle?
This entire building?
Yeah, I'm familiar. I dropped by. So I just want to know what's in these buildings now?
Currently, what's in it? I think it's just open space.
Okay, how about the middle building?
I think it's just open space.
Okay, the last building has got a commercial-
I believe that's commercial kitchen.
Right, and you wanted to split that in half, make it half commercial, half apartment?
No.
This one here?
This building?
Yeah.
And this middle part?
Yeah.
That's all going to be commercial?
All going to be commercial.
Just this will be a one-bedroom apartment, up and down?
Okay.
And an office and a bathroom in the middle?
In that little middle section, correct.
And you've got a total, what square foot is there now?
7,500. Which 5,000 is required. So the lot is larger than what's required in the district.
What are the proposed hours of operation for this business?
I would guess between the hours of, let's say, 6:00 to 7:00. 6:00 AM, 7:00 PM, six days a week, no Sundays.
Are you providing off-street parking for the new two-story?
Yeah, I mean, if you've been to the site, everything other than the building is basically off-street park.
It's going to be a two-story apartment, single, one apartment?
Correct. And Mr. Alz, if you could pass the, the plan down, the chairman might be able to get a better idea of where the apartment applies. You see that front green section?
No, I'm familiar with the building. Being a Flint kid, I kind of know where it is and what's there.
Just the front portion would be the apartment, first and second floor apartment.
It almost looks like one out.
It does, but I couldn't tell you what the building's being used for.
Have you seen this picture down there?
The door might have gone.
Yeah, no, open the door.
Open the door and, and again, the entire building would be rehabbed. You can see the work the gentleman's done to the property to the south. The building definitely does need some upkeep.
I'm struggling with the combination of the two usage. It's bad enough we have a commercial use in the middle of this residential neighborhood.
Right. What happens, I mean, what's unique about this, this property is the fact that we have this, it's a commercially-built building. That's obvious. It's a block building.
No, no, we've got that. I know what we're struck with, the structure, so.
So the uniqueness and, and to me, the hardship of it is that we've got this commercial building that doesn't lend itself to making it a, a two-family house, which is what would be allowed in the district.
No, but I, I think the two, my, I'm looking at it and just saying what I'm doing, what we're doing, if we grant it, is maybe overburdening this particular lot. Now we've got a commercial usage, now we've got a residential usage, the residential usage being more in conformity with the general district, but maybe we're dealing with the change of use for this premises. I don't know whether there's anybody here opposed to it or in favor of it, but the six to seven, six days a week. Let's see, let's see what, let's see what people can say.
What I would offer is that the board would have the ability to act on the two requests separately. One, that they could act on the commercial and deny the apartment or vice versa.
I don't think we can because it wasn't advertised.
No, it was singularly, yeah. All right, let's see. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. We'll start over here, young madam, and we'll work across.
You want to go first?
You can go for it.
He's the owner of the house.
You're the owner of the house, okay. Tell us who you are and tell us why you're opposed to it.
Howard Herring, I'm property owner, 110 Hafford Street.
His house, right?
I, I'm on-
110 Hafford.
Right to the north.
Donnelly Street, Hafford.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I see it. You're a director, you're a director butler to the north. You're on the corner of Donnelly and Hafford Streets.
Yes, sir.
And he said that's commercial property. I called. It's not commercial property. They said after two years, if no one exists in commercial, it's non-commercial. Capital Caterers has been out of there for eight years or more. That building has been vacant. There's been rats, there's been everything in there. They just bought that a year ago. That vacant, that has been vacant and it's very congested, our area, kids ride bikes. It's a one-way street, cars only park on both sides. If he wanted to, to me, if he wanted to have a commercial site, I'm sure there's many built, many properties in Fort River to get a commercial site, if that was his plans in the future, where he just bought it a year ago.
Can I, can I speak?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The boss is going.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I got it. That was quite clear.
You know, in your opening statement, you stated the board wanted to, I'm a little nervous.
All right, take your time because, you know.
To, you know, to stop congestion in the city.
Yes.
I believe that if there is a commercial business there, it's going to create more congestion. It's going to be cars moving in and out of there. As it is now, I, I noticed personally when he has his trailer on the back of his, of his pickup truck, he can't go up Hafford Street because there's a stone wall there. He has to go down the one-way and then up Donnelly Street.
So he's going down the one-way and down the one-way.
So I, you know, I really think that putting a business there is just going to add-
He can't even get his truck out to go.
It's bad enough, I can just about concentrate on one talk at a time, so go ahead.
I just think that, you know, putting a, a business there is going to add to the congestion. I don't have a problem with a residential. I really don't. But the business situation is kind of tough.
Let me, let me just ask you this question. I mean, the, the structure itself, what's on the site right now looks like a commercially constructed building. There was some activity going on there?
There was, there was capital-
No, there was catering. I don't know, I don't remember what their hours were, but yes, we all know Capital Caterers were there for many years.
Could I say something?
No, let me, let me finish. I just got to ask the question. If we do nothing, then you have a vacant lot that's just going to sit there with the same problems that you have?
Correct.
The man, the petitioner seems to be proposing to spend some money making a change. Whether or not it's a combination of both residential and commercial use or whether or not we limit them to one or the other is something that the board may consider. But to leave it vacant with no development there just doesn't seem-
I agree.
Okay.
I, I believe if it was change, all residential with off-street parking in the back, I, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
As, as far as a business there, you know, it'll be tough.
He said there's only two to three, four apartments in there, but he's wrong. Right across the street is a six-family.
It's a six-family house.
So, I mean, I don't know where he's coming from with where he says two, three.
For all of us that know Hafford Street, yes, it's-
It's very congested.
Apartment district is congested. We, we're familiar with this, yes.
There is, there's one more, if I-
Go ahead, go ahead.
When Capital Caterers was, was in business there, if they had big trucks that had to deliver inside the parking lot, they couldn't do it. They had to block the street. Yeah, I don't want that to happen again. You know, I mean, I don't know, he's got a landscaping business. I don't know if they have loads of bricks or tile.
You don't know, we don't know. We're going to ask that question to try to get more.
Can I say one more thing? Two days ago-
Go ahead.
He had a truck parked in front and he already started construction on that building before he came here. So he's already starting the works to put the bathrooms in, which I don't see right because how could, that's like me driving a car and don't have my license, but I'm going to get my license Monday so I can drive today. He took...
Okay. But I, I understand what you're saying. He owns the property, I don't know what he was doing in the property, whether he was making changes, what he was doing. The simple issue is, he's before the board, the board has to grant permission to do what it is he's looking to do. We have a very limited amount of power, which is land use. And the question that's being presented to us or the request is, what can I do on my lot? And that's what we need to decide. You're a Director Butters, so I've afforded you lots of time to tell us what your concerns are. This board will listen, see if there's anybody else in opposition, and try to come up with some good solution. And if you don't like our solution, if either of you don't like the solution, you have the right to appeal it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? Well, maybe you can tell us about what the, we talked about hours, but what commercial activity, what deliveries, what trucks, that's always been an issue on Halford Street anyway.
I could offer that there would be no storage of materials, there would be only parking of vehicles on the site.
Do you know how many vehicles and what kind of vehicles?
Well, beyond that, I, I would ask the board if they would entertain tabling the matter till we get an opinion from the building inspector of the status of the existing use in the building. If that would help the board at all, one way or the other. We wouldn't be opposed to tabling for one month and have the building, the zoning enforcement official make that determination.
But it is advertised and you requested for a variance.
Correct.
So you've got this very broad relief that you're looking for.
Correct.
So, if the opportunity exists for us to deal with change of use, change of what you're going to do, you've got it all before us now.
If he wants to do it his way, he's gonna have to re-advertise it.
What he said, this is what I'm hearing Dan saying, is that he'll present us, maybe if the building inspector says that the use, whatever the use was, then it might be a change of use and not a variance, it would have to be re-advertised and be pretty much a new petition. If we wanna act on it tonight by way of having it as a variance and the relief that he's looking for, you've got two choices. Either you grant the petition as it was advertised and the relief he was looking for, or we can make conditions and say, no, we'll let you do residential, but we're not gonna let you do commercial, or we'll let you do commercial and no residential, and put some limitations or conditions on it.
But if we air it tonight...
Yes.
And whatever directions it goes...
It's over.
He still can go to the building inspector and get a second opinion.
He can come back and make that argument, sure. Of course he should.
Why don't we do this then? I mean, from listening to what the board's concerns were, what some of the neighbors' concerns were, I mean, it seems like the board has a concern with the mixed use on the site. I would, I would request to be allowed to withdraw...
Well, I can't speak for the rest of the board. All you're hearing is the chairman speaking.
However, I think this might help the board a little bit. Would be willing to withdraw the apartment portion of the proposal and just allow the continued use, or continued commercial use of the property by granting the variance, allowing the specific landscaping business to be on the site. And we could condition it with specific hours, specific when lights can be on, can be off, how many vehicles can be parked on the site. And that way, I think we can address concerns of the neighbors with conditioning of just that one singular use being the landscaping use.
Dan, that's where it is now.
Well...
No, there's no use on it now.
Right now, we've got a blank slate.
Oh.
Right? The original application was for...
But it's a commercial building now, you want...
It's a commercial building, but it hasn't been used commercially, apparently, for a two-year, two-year period of time. So we're really working with a blank slate. However, the site and the hardship on the site, and as the chairman stated before the meeting regarding buildings on the site, we have a commercial building that we have to deal with. So rather than muddy the waters with a commercial building and adding now a residential component, I'm asking to withdraw the residential component and have the board act on the commercial project, just commercial project only, and can condition it, condition it so that the neighbors can be, can be taken care of.
No, I, I don't have a problem. Do you have the specifics for that commercial use, or do you wanna come back with more specifics of it?
What I would ask is, Roberto, if you wanna come down, and maybe you can answer some of the questions that they might have specifically regarding equipment and number of vehicles.
My name is Roberto Roposo, and it's, only have two trucks gonna be in and out. I'll get out in the morning, I'll come in the afternoon, I'll be out all day.
All right, tell me about the trucks. What kind of trucks?
A dump truck, F-250 pickup.
F-250?
Three fifty.
Three fifty?
Yeah.
Dump truck. Wait, 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 just, I'll give you the, listen, excuse me, wait, excuse me, woman. Listen to what he's saying. That way you can get all your, you need a piece of paper to write notes on?
No.
So just let him speak and let him give us the information. He has to, the only way we can make the determination is to listen to what he's saying. If we have interruptions, it's not gonna help. We're gonna allow you to speak, but I wanna hear what it is that he has to say.
I'm sorry.
So we got two, two trucks. One is a dump truck.
Dump truck and a pickup, F-250. And he did say about the parking lot...
No, 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 you, tell me what it...
You wanna park on the side.
All right, so you've got the two dump trucks, an F-350 dump truck and F-250 pickup truck. Okay, those are the two vehicles.
Yes.
Okay, what?
And I have a trailer.
And a trailer. What kind of trailer?
A landscape trailer.
Describe it to me, I don't know what that is.
Is it like a closed-boxing trailer?
No, it's open and not, the whole my own morsel.
So it's a trailer that connects to the back of either the pickup truck or the...
Yes.
Okay.
And what would be parked on that trailer? Lawnmowers?
Lawnmowers.
Yeah, the most...
Just my own morsel.
No, no, but it's a trailer and it's got the typical landscaping equipment that we see. Okay.
Yeah, it's important to know, this is not an excavation business, this is a landscape business, where it's...
So I'm not gonna have a backhoe, I'm not gonna have...
Exactly. Yes, you, you will not have heavy equipment being parked there, correct.
How about in the back? What, what do you, what will you be storing, if anything, in the back parking lot?
There will be no material stored on site. The building is, there's plenty of room in the building to store anything that he would wanna store.
So the back, I think there's a fence, 'cause we were there yesterday. You've got the fence, and when I look in the back, it looks like a big parking space in the back.
Yes, I, I put that up, because when I put it, everything's falling apart.
No, no, but there's not going to be the bins for mulch, there's not gonna be bins for... Okay, so none of that's gonna...
The only thing parked on site outside of the building would be these two trucks and that one trailer.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, good woman, go ahead, go ahead. Who's asking the question? Gene, go ahead.
I, I think they're better off withdrawing it and advertise it again exactly what they want.
Well, we're not expanding the proposal.
You can't use, you can't use the, the site now.
I believe we would have to...
You don't wanna use a landscaping business out of the site.
Correct.
Right, you're gonna get permission from the board to do it. Right?
Yes.
I think, and that's not advertised that way.
Oh, yes it is.
No, no.
It's advertised and put apartment and a commercial part of it, and use the other half for commercial.
Okay, let me, let me read, let me see, let me, wait, just let me read what was advertised. Here, I'll get what the actual advertisement was. Variance, it was a variance request to convert a portion of the existing commercial building into a residential unit and to construct an office and restroom for the current business waiving use in dimensional requirements in a general residence district.
What's the current business?
Let me see the petition, let me see the actual petition. Applicant requests a variance from the City of Florida's in a waiving applicable requirements in a G just, the applicant requests relief allowing conversion of a portion of the commercial building into a dwelling unit while also constructing a formal office and laboratory for the business use. Yeah, that's what was advertised, and I think the use, the current use is, you don't have a current use.
Okay.
So I think, Gene, Gene, you may be, that may be in your best interest to withdraw it.
We'll request a withdrawal or refile for just the landscaping use.
For the, with more specificity.
That's fine.
Okay, I think that may be in everyone's best interest.
It's gonna haunt you down the road.
No, 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 I think that was, that was good, okay, okay. So, this is what's going to happen. What was advertised wasn't specific for what we were going down the road for the variance. So, the request is being made now to withdraw the petition, the refile for whatever relief they're looking for with much more specificity. When you see that again, you'll be getting notice, but let me see if there's anybody else opposed to it, and then we'll make a vote, we'll have a vote on whether to allow them to withdraw it without prejudice.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, you can ask.
As of right now, he's using that as a business, is he, can he do that?
Well, let's, let me answer in a very lawyerly way.
I just, I don't think the lawyer...
The man, he bought, he bought the building. He has, the fact that he has his vehicles there, drives on, drives off. I don't know whether he's conducting his business there or not, he doesn't, I don't know whether he's got a sign, whether he's doing whatever.
No, he doesn't.
But he's, that's what he's doing. He's coming before the board for permission to do a very specific authorized business, which I anticipate to be a landscaping business. Or he may come back and say, I wanna use it as a commercial building for offices or something else. That's something for him to decide. But the fact that they didn't present evidence and the building inspector didn't say that it's been a commercial use, therefore we can do something else on it and have a change of use, is something that may happen between now and the next meeting about the time they file. If he's operating his business there, he can't operate, he cannot. The zone, my opinion is, he can't operate that business until we grant him relief. So, if he's gonna drive his car and look at it and make sure the roof doesn't leak and do whatever, he can do all of that. I don't think that would be a violation.
Thank you, you answered my question, thank you.
So, is there anyone else opposed to this petition? Okay, we've got the...
I'd make a motion to allow it.
No, he made the mo, do we wanna allow his motion to withdraw the petition?
Allow...
So you make the motion to allow the withdrawal...
I make a motion to allow him to withdraw the petition.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
I second.
All those in favor? Okay, so withdraw it without prejudice, come back and refine what you want, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The board will stand in recess for about five minutes. Thank you. Agenda item number five. All set? Essex Realty Nominee Trust, 804 Jefferson Street, Lot E2476. Variance request to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a single-family dwelling waiving use in dimensional requirements in a commercial mill district. Lot size 7,725 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record, Dan Aguirre of Site Tech Engineering. Today this evening on behalf of Essex Realty Nominee Trust regarding a property located at 804 Jefferson Street. Property is located at the south end of the city, on Jefferson Street. It is currently in a CMD district, which is what is now called the Commercial Mill District, just as of August of last year. Previously, this entire area was owned industrial. And over the last fifteen years or so, it has basically been developed solely for residential purposes. Many subdivisions wrap around this entire site, all through the industrial zone, were all granted variances. This application that we have before you is that we have a lot that is 7,725 square feet, has 55 feet of frontage on Jefferson Street and 140.95 feet on Grattan Street. The commercial district, the new commercial district, has a requirement of 100 feet of frontage with 10,000 square feet. Currently on this site, there is an existing single-family home. I don't know if anybody had a chance to go by and take a look at it. The applicant would like to remove the existing single-family home, basically shift the house a little bit further away from Grattan Street, hold the front line, and basically just build a house a little bit bigger than what was there, but it would have a second floor on it. So rather than retrofit the existing structure, they saw, thought that it would be better just to knock that one down, build an entirely new home on the site.
So really, it's the dotted, it's the dotted...
The dotted line is the existing house.
Is the existing, and what we have is the better, the better situated house, the proposed single-family dwelling.
Correct.
Thirty by thirty-six, ten-foot side yards.
And the, yes, the proposed home would meet all of the setback requirements for the CMD district, where the new home, the existing house does not meet the requirements.
Okay.
So it's a pretty straightforward application, again, surrounded by single-family homes. The only industrial user is the electrical warehouse and the beverage facility there that you can see from Route 24.
Okay.
So pretty straightforward application.
Thank you.
You're keeping the garage in the shed, not touching it?
There, there's no reason to take it down, they may choose to, but it doesn't come into play with any type of construction activities, so I'm assuming it could stay.
Any off-street parking?
We would provide two off-street parking spaces, yes. The house would face Jefferson Street.
Okay, good. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Trum, I think it's a reasonable question. I make a motion to re-grant.
Okay. Any conditions to off-street parking?
For two off-street parkings to condition?
Yeah.
And the house facing Jefferson?
And the house, of course, facing the main street.
Yep, and raise the existing house.
Raise the existing house, raising of the existing house precondition to get a...
Building.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, petition's granted with those conditions. Agenda item number seven. Family Services Association, 334 Tuttle Street, Lot B187. Variance request to convert the existing commercial building into a single-family dwelling waiving use in dimensional requirements in a commercial mill district. Lot size 5,024 plus or minus square feet. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carol Nagle. I'm Chief Protective Officer at Building Services Association Headquarters here at 101 Bioshield Plaza. And as stated, we're here because we'd like to request a variance from the Tuttle Street property going from commercial to residential. Currently, there's a preschool that's located there. We'll be moving that location, and we'd like to sell the building as a single-family dwelling. We do have a buyer who'd like to come in and use it for that purpose.
Good, thank you, straightforward. Mr. Moran? I'm sure she didn't bring you down. You have anything to contribute to that?
Uh, no, Carol speaks for, for both of us. I'm just here to seek your approval of our, our request.
Okay, members of the board, any questions?
You're gonna do anything to the building?
Not at all.
Except for rehab it?
They're not, do we get their selling?
Oh, yeah, selling it.
Selling it, yes.
And you wanna go from commercial to single-family?
To the commercial to a single-family.
Sure, I've never been on a street in my whole life.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Trum, I think it's a reasonable question. I make a motion to re-grant.
Okay.
Wait a second.
All those in favor? What?
Off-street parking?
I, I don't know, well, is there, let's ask the question, so we'll have some discussion on the motion. Is there any, can there be off-street parking as a condition?
There currently two spots.
Is it, I'm trying to think, when you go at the end of the street, when you take the left, is the parking over there?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just, I just couldn't remember when we drove by yesterday, Gene, where it was. It was kinda tight when you got to the end of the street.
And went along. I'd like to add that...
To off-street parking?
To off-street parking, and that it is truly gonna be a single-family home, that's it.
Yes.
That's it?
Not a black, it's not a...
No, no, condition being, single-family dwelling to off-street parking spaces.
I second.
Is that Gene's motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Petition's granted with those conditions. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight. Hess Corporation, 15 Eastern Avenue, Lots L6123111. Special permit request to permit the sale of beer and wine for the existing convenience store waiving use in dimensional requirements in a general residence district. G, Lot size 22,943 plus or minus square feet. Gentlemen, good evening.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Phil Bombardo. I'm the attorney for the project, and with me is Andy Launbacher from Hess Corporation.
Good evening.
Very briefly, we're looking to add a beer and wine, a modest beer and wine offering to this currently retail store. If, if you're not exactly familiar with the store, and you're familiar with retail convenience stores, you go over to get some soda or water, and you have what are called reach-in coolers. And what Hess would do is probably put more than two coolers, stock them with beer and wine, and maybe have a couple of shelves available. It's not expected to be any, any more than that. It's not a typical package store or anything like that. It's just adding the beer and wine to its existing offering of your typical convenience store. Nothing is changing with respect to the exterior of the building. We are aware that we do need to go get an actual beer and wine license if this is granted.
Okay. All right, this is one, it's a special permit bifurcated. We have to first make the determination. I mean, it's straightforward. They have a convenience store, they wanna add beer and wine, they sell gasoline, motor vehicles come in. So, the first question that has to be answered, is the relief sought? Is it going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing use to the neighborhood? If we find that it's going to be more detrimental and we say no, then the hearing's over. If we say it doesn't, it doesn't impact the neighborhood detrimentally, then we'll go on to the substantive part of the, of the hearing. So...
Mr. Trum, I...
Let me, I was gonna see if anybody was here in favor or opposed to the petition before we got there. Is anyone here in favor? Right, all right, so we have, so, we'll start, is there anyone else? Just you? Yes, sir, will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Paul Quarterey, and I own the property.
Okay, so you're in favor, you think it's a great idea, good. Is there any...
And basically, let me add to that, Hess has been a wonderful tenant, and they do everything right, so I, I don't have any concerns that it's gonna in any way impact it. And I have a lot at stake to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Madam?
My name is Lena Biber. I live across the street. My house is on the corner of Eastern Avenue and Madison Street.
Yes.
So I already have a, I live in a house for 37 years. I already have a few problems. I think that's another problem that comes for me.
Okay.
Any address?
2242 Madison Street.
Thank you.
Because my house, the, the, toward the gas station, there's a hill.
Yes.
So many people go to put in gas because the hill is my wall. There's a, I'm in the house, I have a tenant, because sometimes, two times a year, sometimes more than that. Even the dumpster comes to my driveway.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Gene, you, I think, Gene or Rich was...
Yeah, I, I... Can I voice my opinion?
Of course you can.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be detrimental to the area, because, you know, you go to high school, right up the street, about a half mile away, you got a park, you got a park, and it's, but it's, I think it's the wrong place to put a bank and store.
Okay. Rich, any comments? John? Jim?
I think there's similar.
Well, I think, well, I, I kind of mimic Gene's, I think this, the analogy for me, for the neighborhood is, you've got a gas station, you've got a convenience store, you get gas. I kinda make the analogy similar to CVS in there, getting rid of tobacco products. You don't, the combination of alcohol and gasoline at the same time just doesn't seem to be conducive to the neighborhood, to me. It makes it a little bit too easy. And I think it would just, I think I'm kind of in the same position, Gene, is that it may be a detriment to the neighborhood. So my, my feeling is that the first prong of whether or not it's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood is I think that it would worsen the neighborhood, but that's just my opinion. So, the vote has to be, what do we think you make?
Yeah, I think the motion denied the special permit.
Well, if we, okay, so it goes, that's fine.
Okay.
So you say no.
Right.
Matou says, do you think that it's going to be more detrimental or less detrimental to the neighborhood, or... Matou says, do you think that it's going to be more detrimental or less detrimental to the neighborhood, or?
Yeah, I gotta side with you guys on that, I think there's just too much going on over there already, and the neighbors are complaining, and-
Okay. Jim?
Aye.
John? Okay, so the first part of the hearing, the determination, there's been a finding by the board that this particular change of use or addition to the use of the building is going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. Therefore, there's no reason to go forward, the petition, the special permit is denied. Thank you. Agenda item number nine. Sarah E. Davis and Martin R. Riley, 1679, tough when you get old. 1679 Copacoot Road, Lot W-36-4, variance request to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district R-80. Lot size ninety-six thousand one ninety-six.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Sarah Davis and Martin Riley regarding their single-family home at 1679 Copacoot Road. The board may recall that we were in about a year and a half ago, and were granted a variance very similar to the one that we are back in here for this evening. The application, or the variance that was granted previously, the proposed addition, which is a, would be a conforming structure, would be attached to the existing single-family home out front. When it came time to actually build the structure, the applicants wanted to change the footprint slightly, they wanted to angle the garage a little bit, and add a breezeway connecting the garage to the main new addition. At that time, the building inspector said, because we had changed the footprint, that the applicants needed to come back before the board with this new footprint and get a new variance granted. I don't agree with his interpretation, however, we are here. Again, asking the board to grant the same relief-
But you're coming as a variance, you're not coming as an appeal, or is the building inspector's denying?
That's correct, we are coming in as a variance. I, I do think technically, we may even be able to be here as a special permit, or as, just asking for a finding, however, since a variance was previously granted, we wanted to come in with the same application, slightly different footprint, again, the new footprint, other than the connecting covered walkway, if you remember.
Yes.
We just have shifted the garage a little bit, and gave it a little bit of a twist.
You put the garage to the northwest corner a little bit, and have the walkway go through.
So the entire, really, the proposed structure meets all of the building setback requirements. We far exceed the building setbacks from front yard.
I don't have Mr. Bisco here. My question to you is, was he denying, was he saying no because the variance that we granted had specific dimensions on the original plan?
I did not speak with Mr. Bisco, but the applicant did, and she came to me after the variance had actually expired.
The reason, the reason why I'm asking you this specific question? Because I, I know Ms. Davis made a wonderful presentation the last time she was here. Whether or not we need to give you a building envelope, so if, unless you tell me the foundations are in and things are there. Because I don't want you coming back, you're a foot to the east, you're a foot to the west.
What we can do is, I believe Mr. Riley has a set of building plans with him this evening, that he could submit as a-
He had a set of building plans the last time, so I'm only asking the question.
I told the envelope, yeah.
The, if you get the envelope, and you need to move a foot or two, I really don't want you coming back for a variance. It's one thing if you say, I want a subdivider, I'm moving it someplace else, but if it's just a matter of repositioning the garage from being attached to the house to-
I, then I would ask-
I don't know whether or not you've got anything more specific.
No, I mean, we do show the building setbacks. What I would say is that we would construct a grade, no greater than three thousand square foot footprint, and would meet all building setback requirements for the district. Again, that's other than the connecting covered walkway.
How big, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Three thousand square foot footprint, I think that, that's much larger than what they're proposing.
But the connecting covered, covered walk-
That didn't change.
That didn't change, it was still twenty, I think my recollection was, it met the setbacks along Copacoot. There was no issue on that.
Well, it didn't get closer than the existing structure.
No, no, it didn't get, but I'm saying, there was no relief granted for that, that's staying the same.
That's staying the same.
It goes, the only change is where the garage to the proposed addition was.
That's correct.
So if we, right? Okay. So so long as we keep the existing setbacks, and say it's not going to be greater than three thousand square feet.
Yeah.
They should be able to build and-
I think what they've got, they're ready to build, but, you know, like you said, maybe getting that footprint would be the safe bet. In case they get out and-
Yeah, no, I just-
Find some ledge, or find something, they need to shift something, but the, the main structure would meet all of the setback requirements.
All right, let me see, any other questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to-
Listen, Chairman, I think the request seems reasonable. I'd make a motion to grant a couple of conditions then, that the structure remain a single-family dwelling.
Yes.
Should be no further subdivision of the property.
Yes.
The envelope you asked for was no bigger than three thousand-
Thousand square feet.
Square feet.
Yeah.
And-
Meet all setback requirements.
Meet all setback requirements, and any liquid chemicals stored outside should be covered.
And contained within the burn suitable-
Burn suitable volume, something the water department was concerned with last night.
That's what you determined last night, yeah.
That's my-
So the same, okay.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The variance is granted with those conditions. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Get a better ruler. Agenda item number 10. Janice Warren, 1216 Meridian Street, lots U-17, 1, and 11. Variance request to divide property into three lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot, and construct a single-family dwelling on each of the remaining lots waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district R-30. Lot sizes fifty-eight thousand plus or minus square feet, thirty-five thousand plus or minus square feet, and thirty-five thousand plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Janice Warren, she's also here this evening. She is the property owner of the two parcels that we have before you, and she is also the resident of the existing single-family dwelling at 1216 Meridian Street, which is shown on parcel three of the plan that we have here. Currently, the site that we are in here with you this evening is made up of two different assessors map and lot numbers, lots numbers one and 11. What Ms. Warren would like to do is, basically, going to combine the two parcels that she does have, and come out of it at the other end with three total parcels. Leaving her existing home where she lives on parcel three. That lot would have fifty-eight thousand square feet plus or minus, and a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Again, in this zoning district R-30, the minimum frontage is a hundred and fifty feet, and the minimum area is thirty thousand square feet. But the, the bulk of this proposal is creating two buildable portions, two parcels of land, parcels one and two. Each parcel would have greater than thirty thousand square feet, and each parcel would have a minimum of seventy-five feet of frontage. The variance that we're here actually asking for is basically a reduction in frontage, and we've also asked for a five-foot variance in side yard. The required side yard was five feet, we're asking for a twenty-foot side yard. Prior to August of this year, when the new zoning bylaw came in, this board by special permit had the ability to reduce the frontage as long as the area met the area requirement for the district. So this would have come in under that, under that bylaw. When they rewrote zoning, that section of zoning didn't carry over as an oversight into the new zoning bylaw. So we don't have that luxury of coming in under a special permit.
Maybe as an oversight.
Excuse me?
Maybe as an oversight, maybe not.
What I can offer to the board is that from 2005 till now, within probably a five-hundred-foot radius of this site, one, two, three, six variances have been granted, doing the exact same thing that, that we're asking for this evening. You'll see out the property directly to the south of us, house number 1160. That lot was created in a very similar fashion, and the reduction of frontage went down to twenty feet. Now again, these were all done by variance. They probably could have done it by the special permit, but they didn't. Each one received the variance for doing what they wanted to do. And they were all basically a reduction in frontage, but the actual building area meets the requirements or exceeds the requirements for the zoning district. And that's what we're here for this evening. Both parcels will exceed the area requirements for the district, but we are asking for that reduction in frontage and in side yard. Side yard, where, of five feet, from twenty-five to twenty.
Mr. Truman?
Yep.
Lot A, B, and C, the first one's got a hundred, a hundred of, this is what?
Yeah, go, go by the plan, there was a discrepancy with the, the GIS was from 2008.
Lot A's got what, do you?
Lot one?
Yeah.
Will have thirty-five thousand square feet.
The width of the lot is?
Seventy-five feet.
Oh, seventy-five, so you're, you're planning to put the house in sideways?
No, it'll be built facing Meridian Street.
On the Meridian Street, because you've got seventy, what size house are you gonna put there?
It can be, you'll see on the plan, it can be, it can be thirty-four feet wide. And I mention that so that you can get a feel for how-
And the face of the house is gonna be facing-
You look at the homes on Meridian Street, and the types of homes that were built in this, even though it's not a, I won't say a farm community, but most of these farm-style homes are built with like a main colonial structure-
Right, yeah, for me.
And then it'll go back to a smaller one behind it. So it would be a similar type of architecture to something like that. It's not going to be a long sprawling white house.
And your side yard's gonna be, what, at least twenty?
At least twenty, yes.
Yeah, so what you ended up with was this, I don't know whether this parcels, one and two, were singular parcel before?
No, it was two separate parcels.
One, two, and three.
Oh, sorry. One and eleven, the two that were coming in were-
The one, yes, one and eleven were, had a hundred and fifty-foot frontage, you're splitting it, is that-
No, it had less. Parcel, the one that the house on was oversized.
Parcel three-
Yeah.
Was oversized.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
That one you're, my point being is that you end up with an odd-shaped lot that had seventy-five, seventy thousand square feet or more associated with it.
Correct.
So parcel three becomes a, in all respects, a conforming lot. You then have parcels one and two, that if they were combined together, you'd have the requisite frontage, but an abundance of square footage.
That's correct.
By doing, by reducing, so now I have this uniquely shaped lot, over, overabundance of square footage, a relief from the frontage requirement will allow two single-family dwellings that meet in all respects the dimensional requirements but for frontage. And the side yards.
Correct.
Which, which you need for the relief to put a thirty-four-foot wide dwelling, correct? Okay.
Well said, Davis, well said.
So, no further subdivision, so let me see if there's anybody here, anybody? The left side is being very quiet, Jim, John, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Truman?
If the board is thinking of considering a grant, maybe one of the conditions should be no further subdivisions of these lots.
Mr. Truman, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable request.
Yeah.
But I'd like to make a motion that there'll be no more subdivision of those three lots. And at least two, two off-street parking, well, you've got the existing lot in the middle, so-
That has probably ten more streetblocks, basically.
That's my motion.
Separate utilities?
Well, we do that automatic now, don't we?
In facing, in facing Meridian Street?
Facing Meridian Street.
That way we don't have any sideways houses.
Don't we do separate utilities automatic now when they come here?
Not, if it's a new construction, not usually, it's only if it's coming out of something else.
Of course, separate utilities on these-
In face Meridian.
Facing Meridian, okay, so that's, that's your motion. Do I have a second? I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The petition's granted with those conditions, thank you. Agenda item number 11. Nelson and Bethany Antunes, 985 Ray Street, Lot R-1537. Special permit request to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district S. Lot size eleven thousand nine hundred and sixteen plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Nelson and Bethany Antunes, who are the property owners of the existing single-family dwelling at 985 Ray Street. The homeowners would like to put an addition onto this existing dwelling. It would be a garage addition, and would have living space above that garage. The lot is in a single-family district, which requires one hundred feet of frontage, twelve thousand square feet, which we just missed. We have one hundred and seventeen feet of frontage along Ray Street, and eleven thousand nine hundred and sixteen total square feet. Again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Under the new bylaws in the city of Fall River, we have the ability by special permit or by finding for a single-family or two-family dwellings to allow the expansion of the structure if we are getting no closer to the existing property line. The existing structure is eight feet from the property to its direct west of butter, and the proposed addition would just be the extension of that line along the back of the site, coming forward towards Ray Street, being no closer to Ray Street than the existing structure of thirteen feet plus or minus. So in my opinion, it's a rather straightforward application. We meet the building setbacks to the south, far exceeding them, and again, under the provisions of eighty-six, four-twenty-six C in the new zoning bylaw. The, there isn't necessarily a mechanism to come in for a finding, so we bumped it up to a special permit, and asking for the board to grant it in that manner.
Thank you. Any questions to the board?
Yeah, Dan, you're gonna put a garage there, right?
Correct.
And you're gonna put an addition in back of the garage, two stories?
Yeah, there'll be a small portion of addition on the first floor, but it'll really be second floor, living space-
But the garage is gonna be-
The first floor, pretty much the ninety percent of the first floor.
Right, okay.
What are they adding to the second floor? Kitchen, or is it bedrooms?
I think they've gotten to that point yet, but I'm, they are here this evening, if you wanted to ask them. What are you guys planning on putting on that second floor?
Couple bedrooms, we have two kids right now, which is too small.
Correct. If you go and buy the properties, a very small house.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
No kids. Yes, one kid, sorry, I just don't want it to turn into a two-story.
And it's gonna remain a single-family house.
Absolutely, and you can condition it, condition it that way.
I'm all set.
Any, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Attorney James Clarkin?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. For the record, my name is James Clarkin, I have a ward, an office at eighty-four North Main Street in Fall River. I also live in this neighborhood, probably two hundred and fifty feet away from the low class. Here tonight representing Helen Hussey, she lives at, excuse me, 364 Eldridge Street. She's a director butter to the, to the east. Now, this may seem-
R-1548, 364 Eldridge?
I can't, I can't tell from the map, it's R-15 and it starts off one two four eight.
She's to the west, not behind.
I just want, you said director butter, I'm looking, the only one is that one, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, R-1548. Now, this is just characterized as a very straightforward request, and we disagree with it. What you're dealing with here is a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. Essentially, what's being asked is for your permission, based upon a finding, that this is not going to be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, to basically double the size of this house. This house, according to the application, was purchased by the petitioners about seventeen months ago. Undertaken renovations, I guess to the interior, I walk the dog by there all the time. And certainly to the exterior, and I'm told without building permits, there's a new roof on there. There was a covered entranceway, which has been demolished, and at present, there are a couple of two-by-fours that hold up the overhang over the front door. Let me talk to you a little bit about the neighborhood. The neighborhood is called Leamingville. And it's called that because of, was a huge subdivision in the area eastern Robeson Street, built by a guy named Eldridge Leaming in the nineteen fifties. At the time this was constructed, we didn't know much about water tables, wasn't much in the way of conservation laws. And as a result, the one thing that everybody in Leamingville has in common is a wet basement every time it rains. I'm the exception, because my house on Albany, Harvard Street, is built five feet above the road back. The foundation was blasted out of granite. For everybody else, after a rainfall, you have a symphony of sump pumps running. I would suggest to you that the flow is to the east from Robeson Street. In fact, I checked the elevation lines, and the west side of Ray Street crossing this property is at elevation a hundred and eighty. If you go to the middle of this house lot, it drops two feet, just that short distance, to a hundred and seventy-eight feet. What this means is that water will run towards my client's house in her basement. What it also means is that basically, in doubling the size of this house, you're taking, I don't know how many hundred square feet of what is now permeable surface, and making it impermeable, which is going to increase the amount of water that the ground of water is supposed to, and currently absorbs. That's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. And the chairman at the beginning of this meeting, which is kind of a new but nifty change here, recited the purposes of the zoning bylaw. And you know, one of them, the preface to that talks about that it was enacted to protect the health, safety, welfare, and well-being of the citizens of Fall River. And I would suggest to you that the board allowed this petition to be failing duty to just that, not just to my client, but the people located to the east. Now, Lot R fifteen fifty-two is owned and occupied by Mr. and Mrs. Heckham, and I'm informed that they too are in opposition, they could not be here tonight. And I would ask that you deny the special permit, because I think that you cannot make a determination that it is not substantially more detrimental to the current use. What it does, it takes a structure that is presently right on the property line, eight feet away, and what you're doing is allowing construction of additional, I don't know how many square feet, and the addition to the non-conforming structure will continue to be non-conforming, just increasing the size of it. This is a nice neighborhood, it's all single-family homes, but it does have a water problem, and I think that the allowance of this petition is just going to exacerbate that problem for everybody else in the neighborhood. Glad to answer your questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Clarkin. How do you, how do you square your presentation this evening with Borkland? Are you familiar with it?
Well, I mean, yeah, I read, I read Borkland, I read the predecessor cases. What I think Borkland essentially says is that the building inspector, or yourself as a board, cannot enter refining in a case like this. In, in the predecessor case, Branson, it's almost the same thing, except it was a doubling of a non-conforming structure, or it was doubling of a structure on a non-conforming lot, and the Supreme Court threw it out and said, you can't do it, you can't make that difference.
That was the case prior to Borkland.
I'm sorry?
That was the case prior to, that led to Borkland.
Branson. And what they, and, and the interesting thing about Branson is in Branson, the structure on a non-conforming lot, lot wasn't large enough, was conforming in all other respects in terms of dimensions and setbacks. Here, you've got both a non-conforming lot, and it doesn't meet any of the setbacks, front, rear, aside. And, you know, the court went further in the second case, in fact, I have it here.
No, it's okay, I've got it.
But I mean, you know, but I, I think it's really on point with, with Branson, the person, the zoning board of appeals, four forty-four Mass. two fifty-two, that's a two thousand four case, Mr. Chairman. So I guess what I'm saying too, is aside from making an argument on the permit, is I'm not sure, or I can suggest to you, the board is really without authority in this case to make a finding in things like this, with an actual doubling.
Okay.
Thank you. If I may, in response, we are, we're clearly not doubling the size of the structure. And secondary to that, I would offer that we have the ability to infiltrate the roof runoff associated with this addition into the ground, so that we would not increase stormwater runoff towards the butter. The butter's home, probably the largest home on the street, is probably the most impervious area on anyone's lot. But as, the board has the ability to condition the project that roof runoff from the proposed addition would be directed to roof drain drywells in the ground, and that you could also condition that the proposed driveway be constructed of an impervious-type material, like a block paper or something of that nature, so that...
Pervious, not impervious.
Sorry, pervious. And we would actually be removing asphalt on the site and putting in the pervious pavers in place of that, thus improving stormwater runoff associated with this entire area. And I'm sure the applicant would accept both of those conditions if the board sees fit to grant.
You're looking at at least a hundred and seventy-five feet away from that house now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, does, does the water run a hundred and seventy-five feet?
I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty flat area, it's, it's all going to...
Yeah, I'm familiar with that area, I live up in that area.
Again, do I think the roof drain drywells is overboard? Yes. But in, in an attempt to appease a neighbor, we're willing to do something of that nature.
Yeah.
What did you call it? Roof what?
Roof runoff, like, like a drywall system. Into the ground.
And what it does is the exact language to put it, so it's called a roof...
Roof runoff recharge system.
Roof drain drywall.
And that eliminated half the problem.
Yeah, yeah. Because, because not only will the water that used to hit the ground there now won't even exist, because we're going to collect it, bring the roof, and then put it into the ground. So it won't runoff towards the neighbor's house, if it even does. I don't, I don't even know if it does run towards the neighbor's house.
Oh, I mean, maybe we should have had some experts come in with it, but Attorney Clarkin is the closest thing we have in the audience to an expert, let me...
But let me show the board, the neighbor's not, not appeased by that roof. My point is, if that, I'm not an engineer, I'm a lawyer, but if you look at that, if that's not a near doubling of the square footage, well, you know, I'm not blind, I guess, thank God I'm not an engineer. The only thing that redirecting runoff from the roof is going to do is take water that would have come down under the ground, had been absorbed, and directed someplace else. What we're doing is we're taking all that area that is presently permeable ground, that can accept water, not only from rain that falls in that spot, but water coming down from the west across Ray Street. Now, anybody that builds a house in Leamingville today, any builder, like I used to live at two fifty-seven Harvard, Harold Shipshuttowitz, CPA, who had a house in, probably in the mid-sixties, they were smart enough to know at that time that the water table is unbelievably high there. That house is built in a slab, as has just about every house that's been built in recent years up there, or no more built of the lots, that I'm aware of. And it's a real problem, and you're not going to circumvent it by, you know, hooking up drains around this house. You're going, you're going to contribute to an existing problem, and it shouldn't happen.
Thank you, Attorney Clarkin.
As I said originally, I don't think you have the authority to do what you're being asked to do.
Thank you. All right. This, yes, sir, you, you have something you want to say?
I'm going to probably give you the other contract on the job, but I just say something about the water table. Most water...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We've heard about the water table, we understand Clarkin's statement, we understand what Mr. Aguiar said. I'll be happy to listen to you, but the limited, the limited to... No, no, I'll be happy, because the more information we have is better, but go ahead.
But, but as far as the water table, like, we're talking about, you know, about drainage here and there, almost every problem you have in basements, water comes from the bottom up, not from a rain that goes this way or that way. It's the water table that raises up, that you, you get floods in basements, not, so him putting a drainage this way or that way, guaranteed any water that people get in their basement comes from you. If you have cracks in your concrete, you'll actually see a bubble just come right up, from the bottom up.
What's your name, sir?
It's Peter Bernado.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's nowhere else we need to speak to, that's where we're going.
I don't know, I was just... Your, your client, the homeowner, wants to say a couple words.
What happened to the three minutes?
Pardon me?
Three minutes.
Yeah, I know, well, this, this was kind of important, but go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bethany. I spoke to the director batters that would be impacted by this addition, and they're all in favor of the issue. I did speak to them about the water table, because I was tipped off by my neighbor behind me, which is R fifteen thirty-eight, that Ms. Hussey had approached them with that issue, and they recently also put an addition, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, they have no water problems, I have no water problems.
Listen, the water problem is beyond the scope, but we heard it as an issue from Attorney Clarkin, he was quite articulate about it, Mr. Aguiar's addressed it. I think, I respectfully disagree with Attorney Clarkin, that the board does not have authority. I think the board does in fact have authority to act on it as a special permit, so...
Do we have to make a finding?
We have to have, we have to do the bifurcated yet. So step one, if there's, is there anyone else in opposition to this proposal? Okay. So, if we're going to go forward, we have to have the bifurcated part of, of the finding that this particular proposal in the neighborhood would not be more detrimental or less detrimental to the neighborhood, so, do I have any, do I have a motion that says that it either is or is not?
I'll make the motion that it is not.
It is not, okay.
I second that motion.
All right, so, all those in favor? Okay, so that part of it is, the board finds that the relief sought shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. Now the question comes up about the special permit. Do we want to grant the relief that's being granted, a proposed two-story addition of thirty by thirty-six feet with, and if you wanted to put the conditions of bedrooms only, garage on the first floor, if we want to address it in our limited capacity with roof drain drywells to take care of that, the removal of the driveway being of pervious material rather than impervious material, that would be one option. The other option would be to deny the special permit. The other thing that I'll talk about, the special permit, the standard for it is less than that of a variance. A special permit is something that's allowable, which has the presumption that it's something that we can do if we make the finding that it's less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate Attorney Clark's history lesson about Leamingville, that was very good. But I, I do think it's a reasonable request. I would like to see good families stay in, you know, stay in good areas, improve property, so I'd make a motion to grant with a few conditions. One that, and I think Mr. Aguiar mentioned, the driveway, instead of being asphalt, could be something more permeable, like pavers, whatever you decide to...
Pervious, pervious material, pervious.
Pervious material.
Yes.
Okay, like pavers.
Can we also say what it is? Pervious, pervious is, is the word that will take care of it, that it's not going to be impervious.
Agreed. That, just to satisfy Attorney Clark's concern, that they put in roof drain drywells.
For the addition.
For the addition. The addition not to exceed thirty by thirty-six as shown on the plans. It is to remain a single-family dwelling, and I would just like to add a garage on the first floor, and then bedrooms, maybe a bathroom on the second floor, but no kitchen.
Dan, do they have money to start the one, or should we give them a special permit for two years? My question is, should we have, I don't know what their finances are to do it, special permits can be granted up to two years, if we give them a two-year grant, that way...
You plan to sell it anyway, or you want it for two years?
You're going to start it.
So, we can either do it for a year, they can come back if they run into trouble for extensions, but the board has the authority to grant up to two years.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, why come back? That's my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second on?
I second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Special permit is granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve. Antonio and Gilherme Pimental, five fifty-one Palmer Street, Lot F twenty-four thirty-three. Special permit request to construct a two-story addition and deck to the existing three-family dwelling, waiving use in dimensional requirements in a two-family residence district R four. Lot size eleven thousand two hundred and fifty plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record again, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of the Pimentals, who own the existing three-family dwelling located at five fifty-one Palmer Street. What the applicants would like to do is to construct a twenty by twenty-eight-foot two-story addition to the back of this existing structure, and also to construct a new deck twenty-eight by sixteen feet wide, which is what's illustrated on the plan before you. Again, somewhat similar to the previous application, the board has the ability, under section eighty-six four twenty-five of the bylaw, to grant by special permit the construction of this addition. And, and what the bylaw allows is that as long as we are only extending an existing wall, even though that wall may not meet the current setbacks, that by a special permit, you can grant the ability to construct this addition. So it's a rather straightforward application to an existing three-family dwelling. We would not be adding additional dwellings, units to this building. This is solely an expansion for, for the owners to use, for their own use. If any kitchen were to be built in the unit, the existing kitchen on the first wall would be removed. I'm not sure what the, what plans are going in the addition, but again, the contractor might be able to, or the owner could explain what's going in the addition, but again, no, there would, at the end of construction, there would be no more than one, one kitchen in that first-floor unit.
Remains a three, it remains a three-family.
It remains a three-family, yes.
Dan, it's...
First floor will only have one kitchen.
Correct.
Second floor will only have one, third floor will only have one.
No, no, what I'm saying, it's not, so it's a situation where you're not going to end up with...
The purpose of the addition is not to get an additional unit.
Correct.
But that's an existing house. The kitchens stay where they are, they're not putting another kitchen, replacing the kitchen.
Probably demo the, you know, the kitchen expanded into that room plus whatever table.
So one kitchen per one, but only...
So if you make it one kitchen, you know, if they want to move it, if they want or something, I, I know you do.
It's going to be a single fam, a single, one floor, it's going to be more...
Two-story addition.
It's going to be a two-story addition.
Yes.
So you're going to go up two floors.
That's correct.
You have an addition for the first and addition for the second.
Addition for the first floor and addition for the second floor.
Yeah, that's correct.
So it's like a, it's a apartment, it just makes the apartment longer.
Why not the third?
The third doesn't want it.
Put a deck.
You know, they asked, they didn't want it.
It's going to be two, it, it doesn't say that in the petition.
It says a two-story addition.
Oh, there, is going to be a basement also?
No.
It's, it's going to be a flat slab.
For foundation, you know, required with the pudding, and then there's decks in the back.
So you're adding more square footage per floor?
That's correct.
That's it.
Two-story addition.
Okay. Any questions left? No?
So Mr. Alves, if you look at the house to the east, number five seventy-three?
Right.
See how deep that house is?
Yeah.
It would be of similar size to that house.
Yeah, we, yeah, we go by the...
Big backyard, skewed to the...
Yeah, I was just wondering if the additional deck was just on the first floor or is it a two-floor deck?
I mean, the first floor is going to be a little, well, first floor's a little wider, but the same, yeah, it's the same decks. So, you know, whatever you have in the bottom, you have the same deck.
So it's a two-story deck as well?
Two sto, yeah, they're just two stories going up, identical, it's not...
Identical floors.
Okay. So, anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Yes, sir?
Yeah, excuse me, thanks for letting me talk. My name is Winder O'Neil, I live at five seventy-three Palmer Street.
Five seven three.
Five seven three is your buddy in law.
Yes, sir.
Lived there for the last twenty years.
Okay.
I just want some clarification more than opposing the project that they have. First of all, I want to make sure that nobody else is going to be moving in to that lot next door.
Okay.
Because we're overprolifered as it is on that street. I have no problem, my neighbors, my great neighbors, I have no problem. The problem is, we're overprolifered in that neighborhood.
Okay, let me, let me address that. What you heard Mr. Matus start asking the questions about was, and Mr. Alves, was to make sure that it remains a three-family dwelling with only three units in it. They're making it the first and second floor larger, whether or not they're going to expand the kitchens or additional living room, but not, one of the conditions I think that you hear in the motion, if it gets granted, would be to make sure that it will not be greater than a three-family dwelling. So it's not, it's not becoming a four-family or a five-family, and they're not doing anything with the lot. So that'll take care of that piece.
My only concern was, the overproblem is, is that neighborhood, it's a very tight neighborhood, there's no, I mean, we've actually had fist fights this year over parking on that street here in the winter months. They know, they'll tell you how bad it is to park there.
Okay.
You know, they have to park in the street, and they also have a big driveway. I have a three-car driveway. I have four cars in my family, so it comes down to fistfight, because we can't park on the street. So if there were more people moving into that apartment or the house, their house, that's what I'm opposing.
It's staying a...
And I understand, and I just want to make sure that...
It's staying a three-family.
I just want to make sure that I was on the record knowing that if that stays a three-family, I don't have a problem, but...
Thank you.
If I have to come back to this board and say, hey, they got eight hundred people living there...
Well, you're raising, you're raising an interesting issue that goes beyond the powers of this board. I don't know who's living on the first and second floor. It may be a young couple and they may have lots of children.
Live at the center of the house, that's it.
But in terms of different family units coming in, having it a four-family, five-family, that's not before this board. It's staying a three-family. That simple.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, how many off-street parking spaces do they have?
How many do you, how many guys?
In the winter, we just push up and we put all our cars, like six, seven cars, because that driveway's long and it's...
The whole thing is, the house...
Minimum of six is okay?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we can, when it, when it snowed, we put all our cars in there.
Say four.
The way the house is situated, it's skewed to, it's skewed, yeah, it's, the house is situated skewed to the side boundary line, and on the side of it is open.
If you wanted to.
That's right. Well, they've got, I noticed they had a swing set and other stuff, but I didn't go in the back yesterday, but I saw it, I said, obviously it's going in the back, that's right.
There's no swing set out there.
That was too...
No, we're not adding them.
You're just adding more square footage.
That's it.
More living space, I'd say. So four, minimum four off-street parking.
So let's go through, let's go through the two phases of the hearing if, no, there's no one else in opposition. Oh, there was a letter that was received. Five sixty-one Palmer Street addition opposed. Resident owner, five sixty Palmer Street, there's a, so when I go to the abudders list, I don't know whether Jason, Jason A. and Jonathan Royce are here.
Yeah, that looks like the name, like, can't really...
But that, this was the singular paper that was received, it was received today, March twentieth, two thousand fourteen, and it just says, five sixty-one Palmer Street addition opposed. So, we note that for the record, it's directly across the street. So step one of our determination is, can we get a finding that the relief sought shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing use, or have a finding that it's more detrimental?
No.
That it is not detrimental.
It is not, it is not more detrimental, so, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so first part of the hearing, it says that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Now, do you want to grant the special permit? Do we get a motion to grant the special permit with whatever conditions you want?
I make a motion if we grant the special permit to construct a two-story addition.
Okay. Any conditions, Gene?
Yes, well, the condition is that the extent, the addition should be no more than twenty by twenty-eight, two stories high, and a deck no bigger than twenty-eight by sixteen.
Okay. The property remains a three-family?
And parking be, we were talking about six, Dan, you were saying, how many parking, off-street parking you have now?
Just, can you zoom? If we say four, so, four, minimum, minimum of off-street...
Well, you got a six, you got a three, ten in an apartment, these people have two cars, I like to see it, at least six.
Six?
Is there a problem putting six cars off?
We'll have to extend it.
Yeah, extend it, yeah, take out the...
So make it, make it a minimum then.
That's a minimum of six off-street parking.
Minimum of six off-street parking.
Otherwise, you're gonna be parking in the street and the...
We avoid the fistfights.
Right.
It wasn't us.
That's my motion with the condition.
No, no, and, and it remains a three-family.
Remains a three-family and only one kitchen.
One kitchen per apartment.
I second Gene's motion.
Okay, Gene's motion with those conditions. Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Petition's granted with those conditions. Thank you, good luck. Karen B. Viveras, three seventy Barnes Street, lot K twenty fifty-six. Variance request to divide the property into two lots, leaving the existing three-family dwelling on one lot and construct a single-family dwelling on the other lot, waiving use in dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district S. Lot sizes seven thousand five hundred plus or minus square feet and five thousand plus or minus square feet. Excuse me, can you take it outside, please? Thank you.
What's that? Go. Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering. Here this evening on behalf of Karen Viveras, who is the property owner of the existing three-family dwelling located at three seventy Barnes Street. Mrs. Viveras is here this evening with her son, so if we have any specific questions that you would like to ask of them, please feel free to do so. The existing dwelling, again, number three seventy, is a three-family dwelling located on a lot twelve thousand five hundred square feet. It is situated on the corner of Barnes and Gurnett Street. Gurnett Street is a paper street, has not been constructed, so when you're out there and you see this...
It's not there.
This kind of no man's land in between the house of three seventy and the house to the west being number three ninety-eight. So we have this existing three-family structure where, and how it sits on the lot, is actually shifted over to the west a little bit from center, and all the doors, side doors, all the entrance areas come from the west. The easterly side of this building is the long stretch along the easterly boundary with no doors and basically no use going on to the east of the existing three-family dwelling. The applicant would like to subdivide the piece and cut out a five thousand square-foot parcel and construct a single-family dwelling on it with ten-foot side yard setbacks. That would leave the existing three-family dwelling with a two-foot setback. We can accommodate three, at a minimum, three off-street parking spaces for parcel one and two off-street parking spaces for parcel number two. Similar relief was granted in the neighborhood directly across the street at three seventy-nine Barnes Street, that was in two thousand and five, and two eighty-six Barnes Street as well, and two thousand and six, allowing the creation of lots of approximately five thousand square feet.
What was the other one? What was that last one?
Two eighty-six in two thousand and six.
Two eighty-six bonds?
Yep. That's up the street just a little bit.
That's not shown on the plan.
No, it's a little bit, it's maybe like four more houses up, Eric Rosendies.
West.
I think it was that, yeah, and west, three lots, I believe, yeah. So the house that you see directly across the street at three seventy-nine with forty-eight feet of frontage and five thousand square feet, that was, that was allowed by variance. One of the, of the two homes, actually, the new home is three sixty-five, the existing three-family dwelling.
K twenty-nine, K twenty-ninety-one and K twenty-eleven were one lot, they were split.
K twenty-ninety-one.
When did that happen?
That was in two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six.
Sorry, two thousand and five for that one.
Two thousand and five, okay.
And again, Mrs. Viveras was an app, owned the property across the street at that time, voiced no opposition to the project and supported the owner in doing what they wanted to do with hope that she would someday be able to do the same and would hopefully receive the same type of treatment from her neighbors as she gave to others.
What's the neighbor's name?
Karen Viveras.
No, what was the neighbor's name?
I'm not sure what the, what the neighbor's name was.
You're not in the petition, are you?
No.
No, actually, and, you know, and I just read it again today.
That's right.
And I forgot what it was.
Yeah, now, what type of house are you gonna put on that lot?
Just a single-family structure.
Facing what?
Facing Barnes Street.
Okay.
And what happens, I mean, we have the luxury of, I mean, technically on Gurnett Street, being an unconstructed way in the city, there is some argument that you could potentially own to the center line of that street, however, we would have to go through, you know, abandonment of the street and things of that nature to increase the size of that. And that may be something that, that we do with the neighbors, you know, after this, but as of the time right now...
That was, that was one of my, I couldn't find in the band when I was looking at.
I wish there was. So again, to the east, we don't have a direct abutter technically to the east, so we're not, we're not gonna be building on, on top of somebody to the east. And we can build, you know, a substantial structure thirty by forty at the biggest, that's what we have shown here, with ten-foot side yards, twenty-foot front yard setbacks and a twenty-five-foot area.
Off-street parking.
At least two, yes.
And Dan, how big is the deck gonna be on the back?
Let's see, if we're a hundred, eighty.
Eighty minus forty is four.
Probably twelve.
Twelve by twelve.
Twelve by twelve? It could be twelve by sixteen, anything of that nature.
Well, no closer to the rear lot line. You could come, you could come wider along the back.
It'll have a fit.
The width of the house.
Correct, will be no bigger than that. I, I think it's important that the rear yard setback, the only true abutter that we have is the abutter to the north. And so I would, our intention was in keeping the required twenty-five foot setback.
You don't care about the width, you care about the length.
The width, definitely. Keep it, it's, 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 the width of the house. That's a big one.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't matter, just keep the rear.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone here, okay, is there anything else? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here, I know you are here. Anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a reasonable request.
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
Oh, okay, I read that.
There's a petition in favor, it says, we, the undersigned abudders, are not opposed to the petition. And those are two, Robert Levek, Walter, I think it's Camara, I put it away, let me see, Susan, let me get to the abudders list. Let's see, two seventeen, which is Robert and Allison Levek. Two oh five Rainey Street is Walter and Susan Camara. One ninety-seven is William and Susan Bellmore. Three fifty-five is Antonio Reposa. Three fifty-two is Roland Anthony and Kathleen Marie Roy. And three fifty-two, oh, they're both at the same address. So those are the director abudders that are in favor of or not opposed to the petition.
Mr. Chairman, anybody against the petition?
Not really, but I'd like to make a few comments about the, the location before we get to it.
Is this, is this, Dan, is this coming down, whatever this is?
Yes.
Is this an old picture? Excuse me? Is this an old picture or is this garage?
The fireovers were done back in like two thousand and eight, but it is there.
They have to ask this, how this garage down would fit the new house?
Correct.
If you do it. The, this is an S district, Dan.
That's correct.
This is a twelve thousand perfectly conforming lot. We have a pre-existing non-conforming three-family dwelling. Is that...
That's correct.
So lots are a conforming lot, not, an existing non-conforming use on the lot?
That's correct.
So you, you end up, the way you're dividing it, we take something that conforms in all respects except for the use, which is already non-conforming. When you drop your, when you carve off this new parcel two with a five thousand square-foot lot, I end up with two non-conforming lots, I end up with a non-conforming use on the remaining lot parcel one, and I end up with a two-foot side yard, and I end up with some side yards that don't conform to the area.
Well, they don't conform to the district, I would say that they conform to the area.
They don't conform to the district. Let me, let me be more articulate. They don't conform to the requirements of the district, so you need relief there, along with frontage waiver.
Correct. What our intentions were, and I'm sure you could, you can see it...
I want to distinguish the, the one across the street that you mentioned.
Yes.
I think maybe my review of this would be a little bit different. If, with the other one across the street on Barnes, three seventy-nine and three sixty-five, if the existing three-family was skewed to one of the boundary lines, I can see how the analysis went to say I had this other lot where the existing, where the new single-family was developed and you created a five thousand square-foot lot, and say maybe the owner of the property was being denied use of the property. But on this particular issue, in this particular lot, the house is dead-set in the middle. I'm just trying, I'm trying to get some way to say that because of the shape that there is, this hardship.
What I stated in the initial presentation was that if you go out and you use this existing three-family structure, the land to the east, like I said, is almost no man's land. It's on the back end of the house, the straight line of the house, no doors, nothing else, anything that really gets done there as far as using the yard, using the entrance, everything else comes from the west.
I got it, but that's what I was looking for. I purposely went to the registry looking to see if there was an abandonment, because I would say that, I think it would change the structure of what was going on, but that's just my opinion on this particular project.
And what our intention were of doing was, the lot to our west is an existing three-family structure on seventy-five hundred square feet. So we were able to mimic that with our three-family structure, seventy-five hundred square feet, then directly across the street. Now, we had a lot that was ten thousand eight hundred square feet with an existing two-family, so we're starting even with a smaller structure where we try to...
I got it, it's an older neighborhood, I, I got that.
And, and I, I know we, we come in here often in this district, I mean, for the life of me, I can't understand why this area is zoned.
Yes.
We're just a couple of hundred feet west, we're zoned G.
Little bit more than that, because the line is a little bit to the, to the west.
Is it past county or is it?
It's bisex county.
Okay. So it, it kind of leaves, I mean, everybody in this neighborhood, you know, in a, in a district where nobody, nobody really conforms, because...
No, we know this.
You know? So it just, we end up having to come back in here for repetitive petitions just so that people can use their land in a similar fashion to what their neighbors do.
Okay, I guess I've overs my three minutes a row.
I think mine, I think mine, I just...
One, one other question.
Go ahead.
The three-family, you, you only got two feet of budding.
That side yard.
We had talked about this, and what we, what we plan on doing is granting a five-foot easement for that dwelling to use, if they need to put a stage in the paint.
Condition?
Or to access, absolutely.
Yeah, because my concern is the fire department.
Yep.
You got a big guy, he's bigger than two or twenty-four inches.
What, what, what we would normally do on this situation is where, you know, we would put a five-foot easement, and then I would also put a condition that you can't, that you can't put a fence up.
Fence, right, exactly.
Until after the line of the house.
Right.
So that you have the ability to get through that five-foot area and access the rear of the...
So that give you at least twelve-foot...
Open space.
Open space that somebody can get by.
That's important.
Yeah. Okay. So that's agenda item number thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
It's a request for a variance, not a special permit, so do I get a motion to grant? Do I get a motion to deny?
I make a motion that we grant, but there's some future conditions I want to put on it. Let's start, off-street parking, two, separate utilities.
Wait, how many, wait, wait, how many off-street?
At least two.
For the single family.
For the single family and across the existing family, whatever they have now, would they...
They're putting three parking.
But are they three?
They really don't have, maybe they have like one off-street parking space now, so I'm gonna put in at least...
You put three, let's go with three. All right, for, for the existing house, three off-street parking, separate utilities, the new construction, two off-street parking. Deck no bigger than the width of the house, which is...
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Yep.
By twelve?
Twelve.
By twelve. An ease, an easement between an existing house to the new house, at least, for twelve feet?
Five feet.
We'll add, we're gonna add a five-foot easement, so that'll give them...
Seven.
Seven.
Can't be more than twelve, Gene.
No fence, no shrubbery, no shrubbery.
Unobstructed.
Unobstructed, right, so they can have access to get to the back of the house or something after, for emergency. If there anything else anybody wants to add?
Let me ask this, can we end the obstruction like till after the deck of the new home?
Yeah, it's fine, well, actually, you can probably end it to the, in the back, if Yeah, it's fine, well, actually, you can probably end it to the, in the back, if you wanted, the twenty-five feet. To the house, you can probably do it to the house, just want to take enough clearance that they get to the both, both sides of the house.
We understand. I would just add that the house face Bonds.
And, uh, across the, and that's always been a pit peeve of mine is that the house facing the Main Street, Bond Street. That's my motion, if anybody wants to add to it.
No, no, that's your motion.
And then just raise the current garage.
Yes.
Raise.
Raise, raising of the.
For building permit?
For building permit.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, the chairman's opposed. So the vote is four to one. Petition's granted with those conditions. Agenda item number? Does anybody need to take a break? We all set? We got two more items, we go?
We got two more.
Agenda item number fourteen, TA Restaurant Inc., forty, do you need a break there? You're doing all the pitching. Fourteen, TA Restaurant Inc., forty-five Morgan Street, Lot I eighty-one, eight-one. Variance request to divide the property to two lots, leaving the existing parking lot on one lot and the existing building as storage warehouse with office space on the other lot, waiving use in dimensional requirements in apartment District A two. Lot size is twenty-one thousand plus or minus square feet, twenty-two thousand plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, uh, for the record, uh, Dan Aguirre of Sitech Engineering is here this evening on behalf of the TA Restaurant Inc., who is the property owner of the abandoned, well, not say abandoned, old, um, school building located at forty-five Morgan Street. The property is located in an A two district with a minimum frontage requirement of one hundred feet and minimum area of ten thousand square feet. The existing parcel itself, um, is rather large, forty-three thousand square feet, so just under an acre. Um, has a hundred ninety-eight feet on Morgan, one, one forty-four, plus the seventy-three along Ridge, and the eighty-three and the one thirty-four along Whipple. So far exceeds the, the frontage requirements for, for an existing structure, um, the way that it sits. This does fall in an A two apartment district, which by right, right now allows us to put in about twenty-four apartments. As you may know, the TA Restaurant is also owns and operates across the street just diagonally at South Main and Morgan, and has been a neighbor to many of the people in this neighborhood for many, many years. The neighborhood itself does not want the applicant to move forward with an apartment development and add an additional twenty-four units to this neighborhood. The restaurant needs the ability to, um, to keep the existing parking area surrounding this building, that they utilize, the neighborhood utilizes, the housing authority utilizes, everybody in the neighborhood uses this parking lot pretty much, for everybody's uses in the neighborhood. So they're at a point where they need to do something with the building. They don't want to let it sit and be dilapidated any further. So what they would like to do is to subdivide the piece into two parcels and allow the existing building to be utilized as a storage warehouse, uh, with a small office area, uh, for a moving company. Uh, again, this is not a self-storage type of a system where you can just come in and rent a ten-by-ten space and store your goods. This is just strictly a storage warehouse, um, associated with the moving company. So when they do a move and they need to store someone's goods for a period of time, they store it in their facility, then the people can either come or they can deliver the stuff.
In the existing.
In the existing structure.
Okay.
Not gonna, not gonna change anything as far as.
I have an existing structure, this is what I'm gonna use it for.
That, and, and that's basically what we're here.
Split the two, we're gonna put a line on.
Two pieces.
Go ahead.
Correct. So what we need to do, uh, in the district, both parcels will exceed the area requirement. One lot would be twenty-one thousand square feet, the other would be twenty-two thousand square feet. One parcel, parcel one, would exceed the frontage requirement. We would need a reduction in frontage for parcel number two, down to eighty-three feet along Whipple Street.
I'm like totally confused.
You are? No, okay, look at, look at, Morgan Street.
Dividing this lot?
Pardon me?
You know a T and A restaurant?
No, I know, but how would you?
Kind of like you shade.
Exactly, so, so this, this entire parking area is gonna remain on one lot? All right, I got you. And if, there's a rear parking area to this building?
Terrible drawing.
Oh, come on. I think it's clear to everybody else.
Not me.
And you, Gene knew exactly what was going on.
He asked me.
So that's the proposal. So in the rear parking area, as you can see, we have the ability to create, um, some appropriate parking spaces, handicap parking spaces and a loading zone, uh, with the entrance in and out, uh, that would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Looks forward and backwards.
Good, Gene.
Yeah, um, uh, tell me about the, uh, this can be a storage warehouse.
Correct.
So you're gonna have trucks going in there?
Yeah, we'll be trucks going into the parking lot, correct.
I mean, what time during the day are you gonna be having trucks? Is it gonna be midnight or?
No, what we could, I mean, again, just, just as any other petition, you have the ability to condition hours.
Well.
What I would offer, the hours of operation would be, uh, I mean, the school would normally be open probably at seven-thirty.
Yeah.
Um, and making a racket until probably four o'clock.
Yeah, well, we don't want trucks here when the school's open.
No, no, there's no school there anymore, this is the school building.
Oh, oh, oh.
I, I'm just saying, similar with noise in the neighborhood, it's a drawing.
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't we take, why don't we say hours of operation from seven-thirty to five-thirty?
Okay.
No Sundays.
Uh, about lighting, uh, uh, signs?
Uh, I mean, no, there would be no signage and, and no additional lighting other than what's there now.
No trailer trucks?
No, what, what they actually have is like a thirty-foot box truck would be the largest vehicle.
Nothing bigger than thirty feet?
The box would be no bigger than thirty feet, that's correct.
Yeah, that's a brilliant.
That's a kind of.
Can't do that?
I think you can't determine the traffic.
That's a very restricted area.
I don't think you'd get, I don't think you'd get a trailer in there.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you can't.
Okay.
What I do also have, and I can give it to you.
What about signage?
No signage.
I would say maybe a small, I mean, we would need, I guess, a small sign, basically just like an entrance with a small name, let's say twenty-four by forty-eight, so two feet by four foot sign over the door, non-illuminated sign. Yeah. Again, this isn't, this isn't a walk-up type of an establishment.
No, no, I got it.
Retail establishment, this is a kind of, you want to be out of the way, you don't even want people to know you're storing.
You're coming in, you're coming in, the entrance is gonna be off Morgan Street, yes?
No, the entrance will be off Whipple, there's an existing entrance off Whipple.
That one, that one, that one entrance there, so that's gonna be the entrance.
That's correct.
This Morgan Street is going to be just for park.
Or one-way south?
It's a one-way north.
It's a one-way north, yeah, not one-way, no, one-way north?
Yep.
That was a one-way south.
No, one-way north.
And Ridge is, Ridge is the opposite.
Ridge is the opposite, south. Where do you go?
I just wanted to give you a.
That part of the building, Dan, is the, this is the moving, this is the parking for the restaurant.
That's correct. It's have a petition from a number.
You want a line, you can put a big line so you can see it better. And Rich is gonna hear about this now for.
The number of butters and the city councilor as well. A nice little red line would have been nice, several black lines.
Okay, so we have a, we have a petition. We, the undersigned, write to you today in support of the use variance requ- that is before you from the TA Restaurant. The proposal before you would allow the property be subdivided and allowed for a warehouse slash business use at forty-five Morgan Street. The owners of the TA have been investing in the area and have proven to operate professional businesses and have good neighbors for many years. The proposal will allow them the opportunity to lease the building and add more businesses to the downtown area. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this variance. We are sure that if it's approved, this proposal will be a benefit to our neighborhood. And it's signed by somebody at twenty-nine Ridge Street, sixty Ridge Street. I'll, we'll make this part of the record, Don, you don't have to write it all down, I just, the handwriting approaches mine, so I can't. Twenty-nine Ridge Street, thirty-five Ridge Street, fifteen Ridge Street, um. So there's a group of people that are, that say, yes, it's a good idea, and the last page, City Councilor Paul De Silva writes, I write to you today in support of the use variance request that is before you from the TA Restaurant. So he's in support of that. So let me see if there's anybody in favor of. But ask, you asked, yet make sure we understand what we're doing.
The restaurant's right on the corner, right?
Correct.
So it's basically walking across the street and you're there.
That's correct.
It's not.
That's what they're doing now.
It's not this building, it's this building, right on the corner.
Right, on the corner, correct. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Yes, sir?
Again, my name is Wayne Delisle, five seventy-three Palmer Street, City of Florida, Mass. I know the gentleman purchased the property, I know he'll be a good guy to the community, he's always done everything to, to help the community, help the locals. I just wanted to go on the record and say, I mean, that's, that'd be a good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, put that.
Thank you. Ladies? You're, okay, it's all three of you?
Four of us.
Okay, so why, who, is there a spokesman or do you want to do one at a time?
I'll be the first.
Please, tell us who you are and what.
Hi, I'm Donna Pavaris.
Hi, Donna.
Um, I actually manage the building that's right on the side. I am also in charge of.
Wait, wait, let me, let me find the building that's on the side.
Directly across one, uh, I nine twenty-four.
I nine twenty-four, directly across the street. You have the existing commercial warehouse building, yes? Okay.
The reason I'm opposed, so it's a few things.
Well, go ahead.
First of all, if he wants to make a warehouse, I get that, you know, changes my, I was supposed to put housing in there, that was the proposal. He was supposed to make it look really nice, the trees and the green space and this was his proposal.
But I think he could do that as a matter of right.
Didn't happen.
He doesn't need, no, no, he could have done that as a matter of right.
As a matter of right.
So he's coming before this board.
Have it done by a matter of bid package, and he was supposed to have time.
Okay, so wait a minute, wait, can I stop you for a minute? I, I just want to make sure I understand what you're talking about. This, this was one of the schools that the city had sold, and that was part of the bid proposal, is that what you're, okay.
They made a mistake, they messed up.
They?
They made a mistake.
They, they who?
Stated.
No, they who? The, the buyers or the city?
She's in the city council.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Made a mistake, they didn't do it properly, they realized they made a mistake at the end, but they still decided to give it and award it to him, which is fine, no problem. So they didn't get what they were supposed to get in writing with a timeline which exactly stated that's what was supposed to happen. So they can't go back on them and say he was supposed to have this, this, this and done by this certain timeline, okay? So now he gets the building, now wants to split it into parcels. That was a school that was meant to stay as a one-parcel school. That's exactly how it was.
No, wait a minute. Can I stop you for one minute, please? You're making, I, I don't remember seeing anything in a deed, any deed restriction that said that. Do you have something that says that they were restricted from doing this?
No, because they had no restrictions because they weren't, it wasn't in their proposal. So no, they can pretty much ask anything they'd like to ask.
Okay.
So I'm just kind of.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something.
No, and the reason that I don't think it's a great idea is they're separating it, and what they're going to do is they're gonna take the school and they're going to give it three, one, two, three, four parking spaces for the entire school, that they're going to make a storage facility, right, and offices. So they're gonna have this storage company coming in and out, and he'd like, I'm not sure what his name is, I'm sorry.
Who, who's this?
Dan.
First name Dan, last name Aguirre.
Aguirre. Stated that, you know, the trucks would come in and people are not gonna be coming in and out, but then he said that, you know, people could come and get their own stuff. So you're gonna have people coming in with trucks getting their own stuff. If they like.
I don't know, he's shaking his head no, that's not how I understood the business to be.
He said yes and no.
What I had stated was that people were not, it's not a self-storage where you can go in.
It's not a public.
Right, you're not gonna walk in a hallway and go to your little storage unit.
Right.
And, and get whatever. As far as, if, if, if they wanted to hire another moving company to come get all their things, the goods would be brought to the loading dock door, loaded on a truck.
Someone else would take it.
And would be going away.
So why don't I let this young, wait, wait, wait her finish her presentation, but.
So my thing is, is separating this for what reason?
Concern was with the.
What reason are they separating it for?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
You just mentioned, you, one of your question, concerns was there's only five parking spaces because people are gonna come in and get their stuff, and are you concerned with the amount of parking spaces left for the moving?
Left for that building?
For the storage building. Okay, so, okay, because I think there's plenty of room to add more parking if they wanted to, but that's what you're concerned with, the amount of spaces, right?
You think you're gonna lose the parking spaces? Now you're concerned, you're screwed.
There's no school there.
Whatever. She's across the street.
Across the street. Are you utilizing that, that, uh, parking facility now?
No.
No.
No. So what's, what's the issue?
No, just, I just want to hear what your concern is, that's all.
Okay, so the hardship they're stating, the reason, I don't know why they're separating the lot, first of all. Why, if they're gonna use it as warehouse and office.
Which seems like the most general excuse to give when they're splitting something up.
I can get this specific reason.
No, no, wait, no, just.
If they're going to.
I want to hear what her concern is, I want her both.
Why are they separating it, is my thing. Like, I wanted that building so I could put performing arts in there with the part of the building that I have and work it together. Hey, it didn't happen, that's okay. I, I will try and work it with just my little building and, and work through it, I understand that. But what I don't understand is he didn't need to abide by anything, which is fine, you know, they didn't make him abide by it.
Listen, I, I appreciate your argument. Let me get back to, let me get to, let me get to the authority of the board. What we're dealing with is a land use issue. I understand that I'm hearing loud and clear that there was this bid process and that maybe you're not happy with how it turns out, and rightfully so. I think the city council heard some of the concerns that you're raising, and they've changed it with the subsequent sales, but this is what happened, so.
Right.
What, what we're dealing with is a set of facts that say this is what in fact exists today. This is the relief they're looking for. I need you to tell me why you're opposed to it because of things like shape, topography, soil conditions, hardship. It's not in the best interest of the neighborhood.
Okay, it's not in the best interest of the neighborhood, first of all, because of the way it looks right now.
Okay.
Okay. The way they split up the parking and everything else.
Okay, I got that.
All right. It says that their hardship is the reason, the size of the existing building and the unique shape of the walk in frontage on three streets has limited the owner's ability to utilize the building for other uses. Now, if you have three sides, three streets for one building and a walk, how is that limiting you? I would think that that would be great, you, you have three sides, you could pretty much do anything you want for them. To understand what their hardship is in that part. How will the proposed use not be detrimental to the neighborhood? The proposed use will be a less intense use than what is allowed in the district. How would that be? It's all residential in that neighborhood, so now they're gonna put up a warehouse in there. I don't think that that's really good for the neighborhood. And if they're not using the building now, obviously, it's really bad for the neighborhood. I'm just opposed, obviously, for the way that they've taken the building, what they've made it look like. That entire area looks horrible, they've got granite all over the place, they tore the whole place apart.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let somebody else speak at this one.
That's not my three minutes.
Thank you. Matt? No, wait, wait. There were two other ladies behind you, did they want? Okay, so tell us.
My name's Glenn Pavaris, I manage the building on the side, uh, owned by VCR Enterprises, and I'm also president of Telecom Contracting, one of the tenants in the building. The reason I oppose it is, first of all.
You, you, you kind of lost me, tell me, I want to find out where you are, what's the address?
Okay, right across where it says Morgan Street, the building across from it is three parcels.
Three fifty?
There's three fifty.
Yep.
Uh, I believe it's called fifty Morgan.
Oh, you're all on the same building?
You're all on the same building?
I manage all three properties, they're all owned by VCR Enterprises.
Okay.
What three properties, sir?
Three ninety South Main Street, three fifty Morgan, and it's either zero or fifty Morgan, matter or not which tax record you look at.
Across the street.
It's across the street on one.
It's the same building that she was from.
Okay, but he said three properties, I always.
Yeah, that's.
There are three parcels. Yeah.
Yeah, it's technically, it's actually made up of, of three different parcels.
Yeah.
So I nine twenty-four, and what else?
I nine twenty-four, I believe it's, I, I think I nine seventy-two was owned by the same, if you look at the butters.
And I nine twenty, maybe?
Okay, I got it. So Morgan Street across the street, you, you've got all of that property.
Pretty much everything except.
Yeah, seventy-two is, seventy-two is theirs.
Okay, I know, now I see where you are, please tell us.
One on South Main Street, yes, okay, wraps around.
Got it, we got it.
Okay, the reason I oppose it is, first of all, the u- the usage, as it is right now with the parking lot, the original plans called for parking in the front of sixteen parking spaces to be used by TAs or any, any clients or friends it is. Greenery on the sides and parking in the back for twelve apartments, which to me would be a fairly good use of a historic building. To take it and divide it, I can't understand why they would want to divide it if all they're gonna do is just use it as storage. They could keep the entire parking lot, lease it out for storage, if that's their intent rather than fix it. As a realtor, I realize that if you divide that up, they have the ability to sell the other parcels, it's a distressed property, obviously. It won't do anybody any good, they'll probably be coming in front of you people again, wondering what they're gonna do with a large three-story, four-story building with five parking spaces. To bring a truck in to a storage facility like that, going down Whipple, which is a narrow one-way and trying to negotiate any size truck in there, is gonna be very difficult. If you do get a truck in, you're gonna have to have a pretty good driver to be able to maneuver it enough to get it back out. So dividing it, to me, it is their building, it is their property, it's already been turned down by the building inspector for what their use was. I would, I couldn't see a reason why, and maybe Mr. Aguirre can fill us in on that since he has knowledge with his clients, why they would want to divide it up when they could just clean out the building, use it for storage, use all the parking lot, front and back, unless the motive is just to divide it, to sell, is that what they're looking to do?
Well, the motive, the use, again, this is the zoning board of appeals, sir. Those issues, you can, you and Mr. Aguirre can discuss, or whoever is. No, no, I mean, but it's, it's beyond the scope of what this board is. This board is looking for, you've got this proposal, how you want to split it, what you want to use. The concerns that they're raising are more business concerns, nothing to do with the zoning board. The concerns that they're raising are more business concerns, nothing to do with the zoning board, it's a land use issue. You've got the, so I appreciate your concerns, but this board, I wish I had that kind of authority, because boy, it would be wonderful, but I don't.
To go down that street, get in there and come back out?
On Whipple Street?
They, they already brought trucks, they brought trucks in and out to make sure.
No, no, I, I, listen to me, I'm looking at Whipple Street, I know where Whipple Street is, I know the size of it, there's always a problem. Our city is an older city, the streets are laid out the way they're laid out. It's their business model, if the trucks can't get down, I guess they're gonna go out of business because the trucks aren't gonna go there. Uh, it's kind of like a basic economic model, if they're gonna do it, that's fine, if it's not gonna work and the trucks aren't gonna go down, they're gonna get stuck and they're gonna get a big ticket from the city.
It's more a community, a living community, you know, commercial.
Answer why they're something like that, why?
Yeah.
Why are they something like that?
I can give you a little bit more information. First of all, this specific use is a very specific use. Any other use than what this board is granting, or would potentially grant tonight, would have, they would have to come back before you for any expanded use. So this is a very low-intensity use, and that was the intent. The purpose of the subdivision is that there are certain governmental contracts, with the federal government, for the moving company, where they have to own the, the property where the building is. They can't lease, they can't rent, it has to be own, owner occupied for the moving and storage company. So this property will be sold to the moving and storage company, because it has to be deeded in their name to operate and to give. What they do is they do a lot of military moves, where if someone's going away for a year tour of Iraq or anything else, they need to store.
But that's personal, I know, but that's personal to the use. I mean, if Rich wants to know the background, that's fine, but I, I just, I mean, the business model doesn't really enter into what those.
I think it's fair, and they don't wanna lose, and they don't wanna lose the parking for the restaurant along with that deal. Exactly, correct. They don't wanna have cross lines, basically is what it is.
I learned the similar rules like that, where.
Yeah, the, has to be.
Has to own the land, and we dealt with it also.
Okay. Clear, you done, sir?
I'm done, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for your, thank you for your input. Madam?
Yep, my name's Nicole Pavaris, I manage the building with them, same property, so there's no confusion. I, I'm not gonna address the business issues, because, let's face it, those have already been addressed. The use, I disagree with, because the, the parking, I don't know if you guys have drove, driven by there today. But the parcel one is all paved out, parcel two, I drove by there today, there was a tow truck that wasn't able to get out because of, on this side, on the left side that I'm looking at, um, it's actually, it goes down into a walkway, which is, looks like a ditch, so the tow truck couldn't go that way. Or on the other side, um, there were cement, what are they called?
Barrier.
Cement barriers, so they couldn't get out. And that driveway, that actually, the entrance, is actually closed off.
On Morgan or Whipple?
Whipple.
On Whipple.
Whipple Street.
It's closed.
On Whipple, okay.
Doesn't mean they're not.
Um, it was there, but they fenced it off. So it's all enclosed, so the only entrance is that now, so they really only have the front finished, so they've done work on that, now they wanna split it up. I oppose the use just because of those reasons, there's no entrance on that side, which obviously can be easily taken down. But Whipple Street, as you all know, is very narrow, and if they're gonna put a moving business in there, it doesn't seem like the right use for that property, to me.
Okay, thank you.
They've covered everything, I'll just say.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your input. Is there anything, I'll give you the opportunity to address anything that.
I, I, I think that's about it, I mean, again, they've looked at the property, they've brought the trucks in and out to make sure that they can make, you know, the maneuvers that they have to. If, if they have to make an additional curb cut off of Ridge to make things easier, you know, then, then they have the ability to do that. Maybe they wouldn't have to come back to you to do it, I'm not sure, um, but we would, they have the ability to do that.
Can I ask a question?
Again, the parking and, the parking and the loading that, that's shown here is specific to this use. We have the ability to create thirty parking spaces on that side if we wanted to. However, this is what we need for this use, we wanted to show you a legitimate way that the business is going to operate on this site. Again, this is entirely paved area that we're working on, we would hatch out these areas for no parking and loading, handicap parking, if we, you know, we have to provide a handicap space. And as far as parcel number one goes, that project began last fall, uh, because of the winter weather, had to cease, but it will be picking up immediately, and the construction of the remainder of that driveway and the landscaping and everything else will be done within the next month.
Those issues about what you do on your property.
I know, but I just, what's one of the questions that Dan?
I'm trying to limit what, what, what the authority that we've got to deal with, because I'm not the Office of Economic Development, it's strictly a land use issue. And I understand what you're saying, I think the board members do. You've got neighbors across the street that you're gonna have to live with, and whether or not you can ever satisfy them, I don't know.
One thing I think might be very important, very similar to what we did on, on the last one, Gene, is, um, we might wanna create some cross easements here and no fencing around the building, so that way it's clear for fire, uh, for fire control. So if you wanted to put a condition on that, you know, that there was supposed to be no fencing around the building.
You've got a five-foot, pretty much.
But if, we don't wanna put a fence in and have it limited.
No, no, that, that's what Gene, Gene raises a proper issue, especially, and we're all kind of concerned about that with the density of it. You don't want the fire department to have issues to get to it if that's an issue.
I mean, the entire site is currently fenced in, so the need for additional interior fencing, there wouldn't be any.
But for a frontage issue on Whipple Street, you'd be able to do this as a matter of right?
Uh, the side yard said, right, but I mean.
You're, you're limited, the, the structure is what the structure is, but really, the relief that.
As far as the creating of the lot, again, it would have previously been a waiver-frontage kind of a situation, but we don't have that provision anymore. So we would need that, that frontage waiver.
Okay.
Of seventeen feet from one hundred down to eighty-three.
Okay, all right, members of the board, well, sir, I gave you an opportunity to speak, that's, that's, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think it's a reasonable question, but I'd like to put, there's a few conditions I think we could put on here. And some of the conditions that, no, uh, delivery, no earlier than seven, no later than five-thirty, uh, signage, no bigger than two-by-four.
No Sundays.
Uh, no Sundays, uh, deliveries, um, no fence around the property, on the, the lots, it's a.
Other than the street line, street line fencing would be.
Also too, no hazardous material be stored in that building.
Absolutely, no problem. Again, that's in a lot of their contracts as well as the, the.
Right, and if the federal government, I don't think.
Well, wait, let me, let me just, let me digress. We're talk, he's addressing a specific use with what the current use is. If the variance is granted, then this becomes a storage warehouse. You're, he's saying, no, they're not gonna have any, if you make it a condition.
I want a condition.
That no matter who gets it, they're not gonna do it.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Because that's a very congested area there and.
I agree one hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, keep going, Gene.
Okay, um, the law must train the thought.
You were right, no hazardous material.
No hazardous material, uh, uh, delivery, no, uh, no.
Delivery seven thirty AM, no later than five thirty, no Sundays, Monday through Sunday.
Signage no bigger than a two-by-four.
Non-illuminated.
Non-illuminated.
No further subdivision.
No further subdivision, no fence around the property.
No, not.
No fence. No fence within the property from.
Dividing the parking lot.
Through a parking lot. That's my condition, anybody else wants to add anything to it?
Change just the question, th- those restrictions are to parcel two.
Right.
To parcel one.
Right.
Because that's parking that.
Parcel one is a vacant.
Right.
As to parcel two.
So that's my, my motion with the conditions.
Okay, that's Gene's motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
That petition's been granted by a vote of five to nothing, it's unanimous vote. If anybody is unhappy or dissatisfied with the decision, you have the right to appeal the decision. Thank you for coming out and participating this evening. Agenda item number fifteen, Bridgeport Properties LLC, one fifty Baker Street, lot F ten-three. Okay, wait a minute, are we ready?
Yes.
Fifteen, one fifty Baker Street, lot F ten-three. Variance request to construct a four-family dwelling, waiving use in dimensional requirements of a two-family residence district R four. Lot size six thousand one hundred and twenty plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Agia of Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Bridgeport, excuse me, Bridgeport Properties LLC. They are the applicant, Blue Water Holdings LLC is the actual owner of the property. Uh, I do believe you have the appropriate signatures and corporate documents for signatures. This property, uh, that's located at one fifty Baker Street, previously contained a five-dwelling, uh, a five-unit dwelling on the property that burnt down. Uh, it is in an R four district, which is a two-family district. You'll see the surrounding neighborhood consists of primarily six-family, four-family, uh, two-family, a three, another three, a three. Is that there is one one-family across the street. What the applicant would like to do is to construct a four-unit dwelling. So again, a lower, lower intensity use than what previously was there, uh, when the building caught fire. We do have the ability to create, one, two, three, four, five, five parking spaces and a trash area to the rear of the building. The previous five-unit building did not have any, uh, did not have any off-street parking. So it's our intention that the existing, or the proposed four-unit building, with its parking to the rear, the lower, the lower intensity use and more appropriate building setbacks than what was previously there, would be an enhancement to the existing neighborhood.
Okay.
I guess there's no one in favor or opposed.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna ask, there's, there might be somebody hiding, is there anyone in favor, is there anyone opposed? It's a vacant lot on Baker Street, the building got burned down, there was five, they're reconstructing, uh, four or less, they've got some off-street parking, so.
Mr.? Ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a reasonable request, I actually like the fact that it's a four, a four-unit as opposed to a five-unit. I make a, a motion to grant with, um, just a couple of conditions, that you maintain at least a minimum of five parking spaces. I like the fact there's a trash area, you can keep the trash area there as opposed to loading up, uh, Baker Street. That's my motion.
How about side yards, no less than, uh, ten feet?
Ten feet.
And front yard?
And front yard, uh.
I guess tho- those two things are steps, so it's gonna be, what, five feet?
Yeah, five feet from the side, or because they're steps.
Ten all around, step from the back.
Ten, yeah.
Yeah, ten, Gene's right, ten. Ten on the front, ten on the side yards.
Good, so that's your motion.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, the petition's granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Agia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to.
No, we, we, I think on our agenda is, because, uh, we don't, we had the election in January, and we don't, we have an opening for a clerk. There needs to be, the permanent members of the board need to elect someone to succeed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we, uh, we elect Richard Matus as the, uh.
Oh, good, maybe he'll come more often.
As the secretary.
Well, if not, the chairman will appoint.
So there's a motion, Richard Matus.
Matus, okay.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, of course.
Okay, all those in favor?
Can I vote for myself?
Yeah, you can, you should, all right, so Matus has been elected as the clerk of the, the zoning board of appeals. Excuse me, can we finish the meeting before you socialize, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, wait?
We need a motion to adjourn.
No, we need to waive, there was no record, there was no records to read, the January.
Yes, we have to approve.
We have to approve the January minutes and minutes, so waive the reading and approve and accept them.
Yes.
Okay.
We, I make a motion to waive the reading and accept the meeting, the minutes of the January meeting.
Okay, second, Gene?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
John, Frank, okay, the zoning board of appeals is now closed, thank you.